How's it going? Hold on to the weather. Yeah. I know, I know, it's the end of the year. Power hour. No, what is it again? Oh, the drinking game. Yeah, yeah. No, I have, I have, no, no, no.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Committee on Cultural Affairs. If everybody can please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you, Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon, everyone, I'm New York City Councilmember Chi Ose, Chair of the Committee. Can everyone hear me? Okay, great. I'm a little under the weather, so I have the mask, but I did not want to postpone this hearing because it's a very important one. I am Chair of the Committee on Cultural Affairs. Thanks. Vibra is an international intergroup relations, my pronouns are he/him/his. Welcome to our Oversight Hearing on Arts and Cultural Organizations Outreach into New York City Communities. I want to apologize that we're not in a bigger room today. I did advocate on all of our behalf so that we could all fit across the street. However, it's a very busy time of year for the City Council, so there's another busy hearing happening across the street. Today, the Committee will be hearing on two resolutions. The first is a pre-considered resolution sponsored by the Speaker, Councilmember Adrian Adams, condemning recent attacks on members of the Sikh community and the City of New York and seeking a swift end to any discrimination against Sikh New Yorkers. The second resolution is sponsored by Councilmember Rivera. Resolution number 423, calling on Congress and the President to move significant funds away from the military budget in order to fund social services and to hold in-depth public hearings on the basic human needs of city residents that are unmet because of government appropriations for the Pentagon. Now let me welcome my colleague, Councilmember Rivera, to provide brief remarks on her legislation.
Thank you so much, good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Carlina Rivera, Representative of the vibrant and... Is that okay? It sure is, I have the loudest mic I've spoken into. But can everyone hear me okay? I'll speak a little, I'll project a little bit more. Again, I'm Councilmember Carlina Rivera, Representative of the vibrant and active communities of the East Side, incredibly thankful for that. I want to thank the Chair for bringing this resolution to a hearing and to the Move the Money Coalition, who have dedicated themselves to advocating for peace and increased and appropriate spending. Resolution 423 calls on Congress and the President to divest funding from the military budget and instead prioritize providing critical social services to American citizens nationwide. The bill also calls for in-depth public hearings on the basic needs of residents, needs that are going unmet because our federal government spends too much on the military and not enough on everything else. The United States allocated $801 billion to military spending in fiscal year 2021, more than the next nine largest economies combined. New York's ability to fund essential social services directly tied to how much money the federal government allocates to us. The Public Housing Authority, NYCHA, received nearly 70% of its budget last year from the federal government. Without federal money, New Yorkers could lose the low-income home energy assistance program, access to the summer youth employment program, meals on wheels, and domestic violence victim support programs like NYC Hope. This resolution is simple. We call on the federal government to fund programs and services that will uplift the American people. People know what makes them feel safe: excellent healthcare, stable, permanent, and good-paying jobs, quality schools, and decent, affordable housing. A 2022 national survey showed that 56% of Americans support cuts to the defense budget. Right now, in New York City, vital services are being cut, while a democratically-controlled Congress has given the military more money than even President Biden proposed. Moving the money would make such a significant impact on the lives of working-class people in New York City and across the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. Now to the topic of our hearing, and let me start by providing a little background. The New York City Department of Cultural Affairs provides funding for more than 1,000 arts and cultural organizations across the five boroughs of New York City. That is a very wonderful thing. DCLA provides funding for most of the organizations through the Cultural Development Fund, or CDF, and a competitive grant-making process. DCLA also provides funding for the 34 cultural organizations known collectively as the Cultural Institutions Group, or SIG, which is made up of museums, historical societies, performing arts centers, botanical gardens, and zoos, some large, some small, that operate in city-owned facilities and on city-owned parkland. Recently, Cultural Development Fund grants have come under scrutiny for what some advocates believe is insufficient outreach to underserved communities in New York City and for an inequitable distribution across the five boroughs. For example, of the 125 arts and cultural organizations newly funded by Cultural Development Fund grants in fiscal year 2023, four were in the Bronx, four in Staten Island, 15 in Queens, 40 in Brooklyn, and 62, or half of them, in Manhattan. As it turns out, some of our city's larger arts and cultural organizations present events and activities in underserved neighborhoods throughout the five boroughs in an effort to reach those residents who might find it difficult to get to the organization's main location, whether that is because of financial constraints, transportation issues, disabilities, age, English language proficiency, or something else. For example, the SIG institutions state that this kind of outreach is, in fact, part of their public service mission. Some SIG institutions and Cultural Development Fund grantees are indeed filling a need, that is, a need to reach out to underserved communities and to underserved populations. It is a need that was identified as long ago as 2017 in Create NYC, the comprehensive cultural plan developed for New York City, and as recently as this, followed by advocates in our arts and cultural community. We are pleased to have representatives from some of those organizations with us today. We have asked two organizations, Carnegie Hall and Alvin Ailey American Dance Theater, to provide what we call expert testimony. Carnegie Hall will be talking about their Citywide program, which presents free world-class concerts to diverse audiences of all ages and cultures in all five boroughs. Throughout the Citywide program, Carnegie Hall also partners with other cultural organizations such as the Louis Armstrong House Museum and the Schaumburg Center for Research in Black Culture to bring programming to underserved communities. Alvin Ailey American Dance Theater's Ailey Dance for Active Aging, that's a lot of As program, I love, we love alliteration, it's awesome, reaches out to older adults in the community centers and residential facilities by offering dance classes that uniquely invoke the choreographic work of Mr. Ailey himself. Let's take a few minutes to watch Carnegie Hall and Alvin Ailey in action. Believe me, you're gonna love this. Now I would like to ask the hosts of the hearing to play the videos, please.
Our audiences have come to know that, know what they're going to get when we say Carnegie Hall Citywide concert is gonna be at the Schaumburg Center. That's one of the reasons why we just love our partnership with Carnegie Hall Citywide.
Should we turn it up a little bit?
We have a lot of history here, but we're creating new experiences, new this partnership. Just being able to bring new people to this institution, it allows them to engage, to find out something more, like the introduction is music, but they come back, and so it helps to steward them to hear and to see what we have to offer.
Marseille is a neighborhood that I grew up in. There's so much beauty here, to be able to see people and feel the energy live, that right there, that energy is a cyclic, you know, it cycles, it goes to people and it comes back to us, so it just allowed us to just be dead center in the neighborhood and make music and rock out.
Our partnership with Carnegie Hall Citywide, it's really allowed us to present artists that we wouldn't normally have access to. Music is important, art is important, being challenged is important, and we are working together to serve the people of New York City, keep them in dialogue with, you know, a language that everybody understands, music, and I'm glad to be a part of that.
I just moved to New York City last year for school, but I can already feel the community, the sense of community in the city is amazing, and I think that music is a really, really big part of that.
What I love about the engagement with Citywide is that as an artist, it sort of forces you to be ready to interact, ready to act, also react to if there's somebody who, you know, just ends up sort of joining in and clapping on the side, and you know, I love the idea of making those folks feel like they are part of the performance.
So Carnegie Hall to be a part of New York City in this greater sense, actually going all over and creating a moment of artistry that is given to the city, a free concert to the city, that is clearly a statement about wanting art to thrive and be vibrant and be alive and more every.
We're so happy to be here, to gather, to celebrate arts and culture of our great borough and our great city. Thank you for continuing to come out, show up for each other, show up for community and show up for artists.
I'm gonna send you with a CD, okay? These are my people. That's what it's all about.
I think we have one more video host. And maybe go to the sound.
It's a program that is...
And bring the bar up on the bottom left.
...of our program for youth. It's an important program for Ailey because it's our reach out into the community, reaching the older adult population who are so in need of engagement activities.
When you start to do arts and education and working with the active aging community, you really start to get a feel for what Mr. Ailey's talking about when he says bringing dance to the people.
So the structure of the class, what we do, we always start with the check-in, where we get to see how the participants are feeling. From there, we go into a warm-up, we start with a seated warm-up, and then from there we transitioned into a standing warm-up. After that, we do a word wall, which gives them prompts just to get their minds thinking, get some creative juices flowing. Right now, what we're doing is blood memory poems, they share their experiences growing up from anywhere, from a young child into their teens into their adulthood, and then we put those blood memories into creative poem dances.
When split in groups, it's not only that we look for the words associated with the poem, but we also dig deep inside our experience, like what does it mean?
People have shared the most intimate stories, it's really surprising. It really, I think, allows us to release things that are sometimes pushed way down inside ourselves.
The interpretation of a storyline through movement, that had a lot of impact.
Some people are losing their memories, but the recon is important and making those mental and kinesthetic connections.
Because we are a dance company, there's repertory that we can talk about, and so we are working with Ailey Dance for Active Aging to be able to have the participants learn what we call adapted excerpts. The participants change how they view dance because they have felt it in their bodies.
The fact that we're doing parts of Revelations is unbelievable, that we have this opportunity to do this.
Because it's not just about dance, but a huge part of it is community and for them getting a sense of their voice, and that their voice is valid.
They feel that they are creating something, creating a community, that they've done something they haven't done in years.
The sense of this, it depends on the people who run it, who lead it. And these two are extraordinary, I think.
They have that atmosphere of you are an important part of what we're doing, and you are perfect, that they give us this whole spirit.
I will cherish this particular experience because I really feel like they're part of me, they're part of my life.
And it's made me look at our seniors, our senior community, in a totally different way.
I'm 96 years old, and I feel very much younger after I've danced and been there.
I set my appointments after I know what Alvin Ailey does, because I will not give up Alvin Ailey.
To get them from questioning their movement ability to literally seeing them move as nonchalant, says a lot about the community here, it says a lot about the infrastructure and, you know, our mission. Dance comes from the people, it should be given back to the people, and we saw that exemplified here.
Oh, it's a wonderful feeling, I feel like I'm part of his group, you know? I can move, I can move, at 79 years old, I can really move.
Go back to my childhood and see, yeah, I wasn't able to dance at the younger age, but look at me now, I'm 65 and I'm dancing.
They gave light, covering all generations, including us. That part is most thankful, they gave us the light.
Thank you for those two videos, Carnegie Hall and Alvin Ailey. Now we're moving on to the dance portion of our hearing, so everyone get on your two feet. I hope you memorized the choreography. I didn't. Those videos are two extraordinary examples of the engaging work that our arts and cultural organizations do to reach out to communities throughout our great city, and I applaud them for it. We are going to begin this hearing with their testimony today, but first I want to acknowledge my colleagues on the committee who are present, Councilmember Dinowitz, Councilmember Louis, Councilmember Hanif, Councilmember Joseph, and Councilmember Ferias. And online, we have Councilmember Hudson and Councilmember Moya on Zoom. I would also like to thank my staff and the committee staff for their work in preparing today's hearing, Naomi Hopkins, my Chief of Staff, May Vutrapung Vitana, my Policy and Budget Director, Christina Yalmati, the Committee's Legislative Counsel, Regina Paul, the Committee's Legislative Policy Analyst, and Sandra Gray, the Committee's Financial Analyst. Now I would like to address some housekeeping items before we begin with the testimony. Today is an in-person hearing with the option of virtual testimony for the public. The Committee will be accepting registrations for testimony throughout the hearing. Anyone who is attending in person and who wishes to testify in person should see the Sergeant at Arms, Sergeant at Arms, raise your hand, there he is, to fill out a witness slip, even if you registered in advance online. Though it is unusual to do so, we will begin today's hearing with testimony by members of our cultural community, beginning with Carnegie Hall and Alvin Ailey representatives, and then moving to Regina, Regina Bain from the Louis Armstrong House Museum. The testimonies will be followed by Councilmember Q and As, then we will move to testimony from DCLA, followed by Councilmember Q and A. And finally, to additional, to additional public testimony, we will limit Councilmember questions and answers, including comments, to five minutes during the public testimony portion of the hearing. Witnesses from the public will be limited to two minutes. As a reminder to all witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record. The Committee will also be accepting written testimony for up to 72 hours after the hearing. Once you hear that, that bing on the clock, that means that your testimony is over. Again, we do read through your written testimonies, there's a lot of folks today, so let's, let's make sure that we keep to our time. Let me ask our Committee Counsel to call the first panel of witnesses from Carnegie Hall, Alvin Ailey, and Louis Armstrong House Museum. Christina, take it away.
Okay, our first panel will be David Freudenthal, Ayana Cole, Catherine Williams, Amos Mechanic, and Regina Bain.
Chair Ose, members of the Committee, I'm David Freudenthal, Government Relations Director at Carnegie Hall. My gratitude on behalf of us all, for, to you all, for the opportunity to highlight Carnegie Hall's work in this space. Thank you to your, to your staff, to the committee staff, and to all of you for your attention. Carnegie Hall's been, I'm sorry you didn't hear the voices, but you all saw the pictures a little bit, has been at this work in partnership with, with organizations around the city for, for many decades. And, you know, Carnegie Hall Citywide brings remarkable mainstage artists and rising stars outside of our four walls to audience, with free concerts to all ages through, and in the core of this are really substantive, long-term partnerships with, with cultural partners all around the city's libraries, parks, museums, houses of worship, public plazas, you know, to really get out past 57th Street and 7th Avenue and to try to make what, what we have available, what we, what we can do, what we're good at, available to, to others, and truly, we are stronger because of the, of the partnerships. Carnegie Hall is, is a, is a, is a smarter, more responsive, more effective organization because of the partnerships with these remarkable cultural partners around the city. I mean, from our perspective, Citywide, and as the Chair spoke to so well, a really effective way to center arts in neighborhood-driven, community-building efforts, creating opportunities for civic engagement and for supporting local small businesses. As I said, you know, we, we, we work closely with the partners to develop culturally, culturally responsive programming that's relevant to the communities we do, that, with whom we're working. We, we, we bring the talent, the strength of our brand, we help to market the program, and, and both organizations are stronger by, by this engagement that reinforces, this engagement, their work with their own communities, that, that, and also, we, the, through our marketing, we bring the fans of Citywide to, you know, to these spaces. So it's sort of, it's, it's an opportunity for that cultural organization to, you know, to offer a program, you know, serving their constituency, then it brings a whole bunch of new people that they wouldn't necessarily know into their communities. This year, we're gonna be in 37, 37 concerts with 19 venues, about 30,000 people are gonna be served by it, and there are more than 90,000 that, that experience it through the streamed concerts. We, we invite members of the Committee, your Council colleagues, and agency community liaisons to table at the community concerts. It's also been an opportunity for us to, to share important resources, ID NYC registration renewal, info for newly arrived migrants and their families, participatory budgeting, and other community events. This work is made possible because of the Council's consistent support for arts and culture. The commitment to funding the arts and culture is a compound investment in economic opportunity, in economic resiliency and growth, workforce development, community healing, education, and public safety. Look, I, I can't be up here without making a pitch for the, for the budget piece of this. I joined my colleagues, colleagues in the Cultural Institutions Group, the CIG, and the entire cultural sector to ask that DCLA be spared in the next two round of cuts of the, that the administration has proposed in the PEG, so that we can continue to serve all New Yorkers. Concerts that were on the table are not happening. I mean, you know, we are losing programming that is gonna be very, very hard to restore. My, my gratitude, and I would just say that, and this, this free public programming is a, is a much bigger, is one piece of a very big public service commitment that Carnegie Hall has in schools, in justice settings, it, you know, to serving New Yorkers all around the city. I thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Before the next person testifies, David, how does one get to Carnegie Hall?
The N or the R? We, we, you know, the truth is, we, there's lots of, there's tons of free programming at the Hall, family programming, all our early, early childhood stuff. We do a lot of work in New York City schools and in sort of developing remarkably, you know, young talent, there's sort of lots of ways, one of our, actually, my colleague is gonna talk a little bit about, about this work in terms of creating opportunities for, for young New Yorkers who are interested in the music industry.
Good afternoon, everybody, my name is Ayana Cole, I'm part of Carnegie Hall's Wow Music Institute, that's Carnegie's Education and Social Impact Arm, and I serve as the Director of Social Impact Programs there. So as David mentioned, we really strive to provide and create artistic, equitable artistic opportunities for New Yorkers in every borough, and as part of this effort, in partnership with ACS, the Administration for Children's Services, Carnegie Hall's Future Music Project creates a space for young people between the ages of 14 and 19 years old in juvenile justice settings, and helps them to develop as artists, as critical thinkers, as collaborators, and as individuals. So our teaching artists at Carnegie Hall support young people in creating, producing, and performing music, using songwriting as a vehicle through which they can explore their creativity, develop musical skills, and collaborate with their peers. So in addition to direct-service workshops that are customized to the unique needs of secure settings and non-secure settings, young people in non-secure are able to, and the staff, are able to come to Carnegie Hall to share their music that they perform, that they produced at events there for their family members and for peers. And starting in January, we will also be adding monthly, a monthly concert series for staff and youth in secure detention to help to support a safe and engaging environment for everyone there. In another example, where we're striving for equitable economic opportunities, with support from this year's Council's Youth Programs Initiative, is the B-Side. And the B-Side is a free intensive program for New Yorkers between the ages of 14 and 22 years old that are interested in the business of the music industry, with a specific focus on young people from under-resourced communities. The B-Side, and the B is for business, and also the other side of the record, but the young people are too young to know that the other side was called the B-Side, so I'm reminded about my age every time I'm with them.
I didn't know what that was. We get to know now.
Yes. They are, the participants, they, they, they are in an interactive experience where they learn about the inner workings of the music industry with a eye towards, for us, an eye towards increasing the number of young professionals of color entering the music industry. So the curriculum is designed and facilitated by teaching artists and music industry executives, while guest speaker panels, field trips, guide participants through many of the roles and career paths across the industry. So lastly, this, this year, this coming year, program activities are gonna include lessons, presentations from guest speakers and artists, field trips to record labels, to music tech companies, to local recording studios, panels and interactive discussions, and for many of our young people, just jam sessions and performances and concerts. This is a paid experience, participants receive a stipend, transportation, and meals. So through the B-Side, Carnegie really is drawing on our experience of creating youth development programs, and hopefully meaningful youth development programs, in order to deepen impact and provide young people with the tools they need to thrive, to lead, to transform, and in this case, to transform the music industry. So applications for the 2024 cohorts are open until January 4th. Flyers are available. Please share with your constituents and encourage teens to apply, they don't need to be musicians, they just need to be curious, and between the ages of 14 and 22, and it would be nice if they liked music, too. So, thank you, thanks for the opportunity this afternoon to speak.
Thank you.
Shall I go? Great. Yes. There we go. Can you hear me? Good afternoon, Chairman Ose and members of the Committee. My name is Catherine Williams, I am the Director of Ailey Arts and Education and Community Programs. Thank you for giving me and my colleague Amos Mechanic the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon, and I do just wanna make a note that Amos and I are happy to come back at any time and do a little mini Revelations workshop for the Committee. So just let us know when and where, and we will be there.
I mean, why don't you testify and just do it while I testify? The world is your stage.
Many City Councilmembers may be familiar with Ailey's robust pre-K through grade 12 youth programs. Ailey Dance for... Pause. Youth programs which serve up to about 8,000 youth annually across all five boroughs. I'm here today to speak about Ailey Dance for Active Aging. A video is worth 1,000 words, and I hope that you enjoyed it and received a little bit of the meaning of this program for our older adult population. This program was brand-new to Ailey and launched in 2018, it's, it's newest program. It reaches older adults ages 50-plus in older adult centers and in residential homes throughout New York City. So we leave Manhattan, we leave 55th and 9th, and go to the centers where older adults congregate, live, experience. from the people and must always be delivered?
Back to the people.
Back to the people. And that includes older adults. ALE Dance for Active Aging is also an inclusive program and engages older adults with physical and mental challenges through dance classes that support both physical and cognitive stimulation, as well as encourages self-expression and social engagement through building community, thus reducing older adult isolation. ALE has reached, to date, 400 older adults across 15 sites across New York City. With the help from the New York City Council, we are looking to expand ALE Dance for Active Aging to additional sites in your districts so that more older adults can reap the benefits of this unique program. We are grateful for the support from New York City Council members who have supported ALE Dance for Active Aging. Through City Council discretionary funding, including Sue Casa and Support Our Seniors, we've been able to serve older adults in the Bronx, Queens and Manhattan. We thank City Council members Eric Botcher, Julie Menon, Silvina Brooks-Powers and Parina Anna Sanchez for their support and hope that the rest of the Council will consider their support as well and recommend sites in your district that could benefit from this transformative experience for older adults. Thank you. My colleague.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ose and members of the committee. My name is Amos Mechanic, and I am an instructor for Alvin ALE Arts and Education and a former member of the Alvin ALE American Dance Theater. Um, I have been teaching in the ALE Dance for Active Aging Program, conducting dance residencies in older adult centers and residential homes for the past five years since its beginning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today about ALE's newest program, ALE Dance for Active Aging. ALE Dance for Active Aging is very special to me because it is right on par with Mr. ALE's mission to bring dance to the people. I find great joy, immense joy, working with this population of older adults and often walk away from classes feeling that I have received just as much as I have been given. ALE Dance for Active Aging is not just about dance, but it is about building community, hope and confidence. Participants walk away from our classes with a sense of belonging and a sense that they matter and that their stories matter and that their life has meaning. It is wonderful to see individuals blossom as they explore and reignite their creativity. Unfortunately, the older adult population is a population that is often overlooked and forgotten. ALE Dance for Active Aging serves that human need in all of us to be seen, to be appreciated and to know that we all matter. Witnessing the change from individuals when they first start our classes to the end of our sessions is nothing short of inspiring. Participants in the program have expressed comments such as, "I feel more alive after I come here," or, "I forget my age when I'm in these classes," or, as you heard on the video, "I schedule my week around these classes. I will never miss my ALE Dance classes." I join Catherine in thanking New York City Council members who have supported ALE Dance for Active Aging. Your support shines light, honestly, on a community that is such a vibrant part of our city. With your continued support, we ensure that Mr. ALE's vision of bringing dance to the people stays alive. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Regina Bain, Executive Director of the Louis Armstrong House Museum in Corona, Queens, District of Councilmember Francisco Moya. This fall, we partnered with Carnegie Hall Citywide to bring amazing vocalist Brianna Thomas to Queens, to Corona. As an organization standing in the legacy of jazz genius, 30-year New York City resident and America's first black popular music icon, Louis Armstrong, artistic excellence matters. And as Armstrong performed at Carnegie Hall many times, this partnership has synergistic poetry, bringing the Hall's artists to our neighbors in Queens. Since the opening this summer of the new 14,000-square-foot, $26 million, 25 years in the making, state-of-the-art Armstrong Center, championed by Queens College and the Louis Armstrong Educational Foundation and supported by this body, we have held 20 world-class performances and over 40 events for thousands of visitors from Queens, from throughout the city, and for the global community of Armstrong fans who travel to New York to visit his home. These events brought us in partnership with Carnegie Hall, the Newport Jazz Festival, Jazz at Lincoln Center, Das Mensch Museum in Germany, the Neighborhood Housing Services of Queens, Elm Core Youth and Adult Activities, Queensborough Dance Festival, the Summer Youth Employment Program, Armstrong Elementary School, Armstrong Middle School, Frank Sinatra High School and 12 additional public schools, Queens Community Board III, New Yorkers for Culture and the Arts, Justice Arts Programs like Carnegie Hall across New York, organizations for this year's Juneteenth Initiative, volunteer docents, youth interns, including 14-year-old Ruby who lives on the block. This year, we celebrated the 80th anniversary of Armstrong's, of the Armstrongs moving to Queens, the 20th anniversary of the House Museum, and now the new Armstrong Center. We look forward to serving alongside our partners and communities for many years to come. Thank you.
Not everyone who gets up here and testifies gets a round of applause after that. I'm just letting you know. You should see these public safety hearings. It's a different story. Um, Mr. Freudenthal and Ms. Cole, I want to start with, with you both. Thank you for your testimonies. And, uh, also, you know, we've all received information about the wide range of organizations that you work with across the city, from the Brooklyn Museum in Brooklyn down to the historic Richmond Town in Staten Island. How have these organizations and all of the organizations that you've partnered with benefited from the program?
Oh, thank you for the question, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, I, I think we, you know, I think we, we all benefit. I, I, it's a, you know, Regina's testimony really spoke to the way that, um, uh, that, you know, uh, that both organizations are, are elevated, are stronger and are better able to fulfill our public service mission, um, through the partnership. You know, we each have something that we are bringing to the party here. Um, you know, we, the, the, the really, you know, the, uh, the intensive, uh, work together to identify, um, an artist, um, that is going to be resonant for, you know, for, for the communities with, you know, that, where, um, that the, that the partner is serving. Um, uh, you know, we really, like, we bring the, like, the best from our stages, and it's really about, you know, what, um, what the priorities for the partner are. Um, and then, you know, and then we're, um, you know, we're kind of then putting our full force of our, and we pay for that, obviously, you know, we're paying for the, for the artist. Um, but the, but the partner is putting a lot in, too. I mean, there, you know, there's all the production components of this, you know, everybody is, has to be all in. Um, and then we are helping to market, you know, we do a ton of promotion around these, and there's like a, there are Citywide devotees, uh, and they just go everywhere. They go to all of the, of the Citywide concerts. So they're getting all these, you know, new folks in, and it's like, no, and it's a, it's a, you know, we, I mean, each of these partners are different and they have different needs and priorities. But, you know, but, uh, for us, we are more effectively able to, to serve and reach more New Yorkers and communities, folks that may never come to Carnegie Hall, and they, they hear about other things we're doing. We're able to provide those kind of, all those services that I spoke to, uh, spoke about earlier, to, you know, at that, that point. And, uh, and, you know, we, I believe that we, you know, we are both, um, strengthened, um, uh, by that work together.
Thank you. And what are some obstacles that you have found in administering this program?
So, um, I mean, money's always a challenge.
Sure.
Uh, this is, you know, this is, uh, is, is an expensive program that is, uh, gets very little public support, and we are kind of, uh, fundraising like crazy for this. Um, the, uh, you know, there's a pretty deep commitment on the part of the, of the partner, and, and those are long-term partnerships for us. Um, and, you know, and the partner has to have the capacity and the ability to sort of, you know, help bring audiences in, all the logistical stuff, you know, it's, there are, you know, there are, there are things on their, on their side, um, that are, that are challenges. Um, you know, I would say that one thing was interesting is that this was the first program that Carnegie Hall reopened with, um, uh, in, you know, during COVID, because we were able to do outdoor concerts and things that we weren't really doing, but long before the hall was reopened. So we were, and we, we did a ton online and, you know, and the, the programs that Ayana talked about, we really focused in terms of digital programming, serving those in highest need situations. But in terms of live programming, this was a really, really good opportunity, both for us and for the partners, to be, you know, back, you know, bringing people together in safe ways and kind of part of the, of the city getting back on its feet.
Sure. And would Carnegie Hall be able to run this program without DCLA funding?
So, so what I would say about that is that, um, that the, uh, we are harmed by, you know, the, uh, by the, significantly harmed by the cuts that are proposed, uh, of, uh, that have already occurred, and, you know, these much deeper cuts that are, that are, uh, posed. And, uh, we are already cutting, uh, concerts. So I don't know what's going to happen to this, you know, uh, to this, this program. Um, but things are already off, you know, off the table. Um, and, uh, the city support, uh, Carnegie Hall, uh, leverages its city support, um, but many, many times. Uh, but the city support, I would say, is really key to the, to the, uh, the public compact that we have, um, uh, in terms of serving New Yorkers, New Yorkers in high need situations of all ages. Um, and, you know, and, and that, that money leverages and incentivizes a ton of private fundraising that we do, um, to be able to provide these services.
And, and you testified that these programs are also opportunities for civic tabling, such as ID NYC signups, and, and without funding, these concerts and, and tabling may not happen, I'm guessing.
That's right. It, you know, it's, it's easy to, for something to go away and much harder for it to come back.
Sure.
That's the, that's the real risk about the, you know, you, you break it, it's, uh, and it's hard to rebuild it.
Mm-hmm.
That's the deal.
The mayor stated that every city agency, including DCLA, will be subjected to pegs, uh, because we need funding to support asylum seekers. Why is the Citywide program and tabling important for New Yorkers, especially for our asylum seekers?
So, the opportunity to, to, for, um, well, a couple answers to that. The one is that, you know, free programming, uh, around the city, you know, easily accessible programming is super important. The community partners, you know, uh, places like, you know, the amazing Louis Armstrong House, you know, have their connections to their communities and are, and are engaged with reaching those, um, those new New Yorkers and, uh, kind of the ability to offer free programming, you know, is a, is a key way to, to invite people in to be part of, uh, to be part of New York in a, in a very, very low-impact way, you know. So that, you know, it's a key service, uh, that, that can be offered. And the, the tabling is a particularly, you know, easy, um, direct way to connect people to services that they might not know about. You know, "Oh, I'll come for a concert." "Oh, but I, I can sign up for ID NYC." Great. Like, it's like, you know, you, you, there's lots of ways the city is trying to reach folks, but they're not necessarily hearing it, right? And so this is a little bit of bait. It, you know, draws people in and they can be aware of all the resources that the city is, you know, pretty good at offering, um, and connecting them to that. And so all that stuff's at risk.
Thank you, Mr. Freudenthal, and thank you, Ms. Cole. Thank you for all the work that you do. Uh, Ms. Williams and Mr. Mechanic, uh, about how many dance classes are taught at community centers and residential facilities per year?
Through our program?
Yes.
Oh, gosh, I don't have that, I don't have that statistic at my fingertips, but, um, I would say 30 times 10, 300 dance classes.
That's a lot.
Yes. Yeah.
And around how many seniors participate in the program Citywide?
Um, each year at each site, this, currently, we're in about nine sites. Um, and we have class sizes increasing post-COVID. In COVID, many places kept the attendance very low for social distancing, but we have about 20 to 25 older adults in each one of our classes, and we partner with our sites and they set the limit there. Sometimes the limit is dictated by the size of the space we have to work in. Uh, we need ample space for people to move, but don't worry, we would make it work right here.
Have any senior centers reported any waitlists for the program?
Yes.
Okay. And have there been any plans to expand the program to all five boroughs?
Yes.
That would require funding, I'm guessing?
Yes.
And DCLA funding?
Much appreciated, yes. Gives us the opportunity to reach communities that, um, may not be as aware of us or, or wouldn't necessarily reach out to us and say, "Can you come out to, um, uh, you know, Far Rockaway, um, Staten Island, we're in conversation there." We have offered, uh, programs through our summer festival, which ALE fundraises for, Citywide Festival, ALE Moves NYC the past two summers, and a part of that are workshops for older adults exclusively, bringing in new partners and new interest.
Would, would Alvin ALE be able to run this program without funding from the city?
We would have to, as my colleague, uh, said from Carnegie Hall, uh, the ALE Organization Development Department would have to do fundraising in order to keep it going, and they do quite a bit of that already. So it's a coupling of, uh, institutional donations, uh, foundation donations, along with the City Council member money and DCLA funds.
All right. Thank you so much for your testimony and for answering my questions. Ms. Bain, you, you stated in your testimony that, I'll give you a second. You stated in your testimony that Louis Armstrong House Museum worked with Carnegie Hall for their Citywide program. How has this partnership been beneficial to the Louis Armstrong House Museum?
It brings world-class artists to our block, to our community, to Corona. Um, it brings them for free, um, and free for our audiences, Corona, um, and that's important. Um, and it, it brings, uh, new audience members, um, as well, who are familiar with Carnegie Hall, um, and what that means and what they know they'll be receiving because this is a program with Carnegie Hall. All of those things are extremely beneficial to us.
You are one of the co-facilitators of the Culture at Three call, uh, which has many of our cultural organizations represented. What are some concerns you have heard from Culture at Three participants about outreach, uh, for, for some of these, these programs?
Yes. So, Culture at Three is a space for the nonprofit leaders of, of New York institutions. As such, it's not an organization, so I can't speak on its behalf.
Sure.
But I can reflect, uh, what we've heard. Um, and there, I think there are other members from Culture at Three who are in the space. We heard on a call yesterday, which was attended by Commissioner Lori Combo, by Associate Commiss, uh, Commissioner Andrea Louie, and we are deeply grateful for that access, for that presence, for that listening, for that response. Um, and what, what they heard, what we heard, what I heard on that call, was a deep challenge. Deep challenge because of, of budgetary concerns, um, that are causing cuts in programs, cuts in staff, um, and, and what, what that, why that is significant for the city of New York. Because, uh, the services that are offered by these institutions help families, help, um, individuals are an economic driver for the city and, uh, are sometimes part of the reason why families move here, why families stay here, because they appreciate the thriving, throbbing nature, uh, that comes, much of it from the arts. And so we see that as an investment, not only in these individual institutions, but in, um, but in the future of New York. And so that's what I heard on the call yesterday is deep concern, um, because of, of how cuts are affecting the institutions and the communities they serve.
Sure. Thank you for that. And in your opinion, how can DCLA and the city support smaller organizations and organizations that serve underserved communities in expanding their outreach?
Yes. I'm deeply grateful for all of the support that happens right now. Um, we know that outreach is marketing. It is, it's, um, getting words out in traditional ways. It also means standing on the block and saying hello to your neighbors. Uh, that's the type of outreach that we have to do because we're in a, we're in a neighborhood. In order to speak to the people in, in the house next door, you have to speak to the people in the house next door. That takes staffing. Um, it takes people who are, um, are, uh, versed in the languages, the literal languages, but also the heart languages of diverse peoples. Um, and that has to be supported through funds. And so we're deeply thankful for all that DCLA does, and, and we need to continue through full staffing and through the programs that we do.
Thank you so much. And before I, I let you all go, um, unless you want to stay for the rest of the
It takes people who are averse in the languages, the literal languages, but also the heart languages of diverse peoples. And that has to be supported through funds. And so we're deeply thankful for all that DCLA does, and we need to continue through full staffing and through the programs that we do.
Thank you so much. And before I let you all go, unless you want to stay for the rest of this hearing, which you're more than welcome to do, do I have any questions from my colleagues up here? Nope. Well, thank you so much. Now let me ask our witnesses from DCLA to come forward, and the committee council will minister the affirmation to the witnesses, who may then begin their testimony. Thank you so much. Give them another round of applause.
I have a question.
A question from the public has to wait until the end of the... You're more than welcome to ask them a question now.
Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before the committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair O'Shea and member of the committee. Before I begin my testimony, can I ask you to make a motion to have Regina read it? Her voice was so fantastic, and I think she'll make us all feel better, and it was like listening to an NPR conversation.
She does have a great voice.
She have a fantastic voice. But I will get on with it. Good afternoon, Chair O'Shea and members of the committee. I am Alton Murray, Deputy Commissioner for the New York City Department of Cultural Affairs. I am here to testify regarding today's topic, Arts and Culture Organizations Outreach in New York City Communities. I am joined by DCLA's General Counsel, Lance Povey, and our Assistant Commissioner for Public Service, Andrea Louie. In New York City, arts and culture are deeply woven into our community. The energy, identity, and vibrancy of our neighborhood are inseparable from the creative expression and cultural activities of the residents who live and work here. That's why DCLA's support for New York City Cultural Community is grounded in a commitment to local programming and public engagement. We see the impact. It's in our institutions opening their doors to wide, actively engaging diverse audience, and in organizations working in community across the city, meeting New Yorkers where they are. One of the primary ways that the agency supports New York City vast cultural community is through our Cultural Development Fund, which provides funding to over 1,000 nonprofits each year. Administered through a peer review process, the CDF centers public service in its guidelines. In fact, it is the single most important criteria for applications. Panelists are explicitly asked the way whether organizations provide programming with consideration toward accessibility, affordability, equity. Applications may demonstrate this in one or more of the following ways. Explicit effort to engage diverse audience, such as programming across all cultural or culture responsive projects, or empowering historically underserved neighborhood with resources. Increase affordability through discount programs, scholarship, sliding scale prices, or other subsidies. Integrating or implementing community input, a representative advisory committee, or other methods of self-determination. Expanding accessibility, such as providing reasonable accommodation, producing multilingual programs or materials, offering transportation or mobile projects, or providing other methods of equitable access. Through CDF, we also maintain close partnerships with Borough Arts Council to help ensure the city funding reaches artists, collective, and small organization in every borough. In FY '23, DCLA provided nearly $3 million for the five borough-specific arts fund, supporting hundreds of individual artists, collectives, smaller nonprofits, doing public-oriented art programming across the city. We've seen Chair O'Shea at a number of these celebrations, marking this important investment in working artists. So we know you've seen the vast diversity of programming that this critical source of funding supports. As a result, the CDF invests in cultural programming all across artistic discipline, fostering programs that, at their core, promote public engagement in every corner of New York City. Efforts to bring arts and culture to every community has been further advanced by our reforms to the CDF process, which prioritize greater equity, increase investment in historically marginalized community. Reforms include increasing the minimum grant towards and expanding eligibility for multi-year awards to all grantees regardless of their budget size. We also cast a wider net for panelists to include a broader range of cultural workers, board members, and artists. Many members of the council help distribute our calls for panelists among their constituents, and for that, we're very thankful. Nobody knows your district better than you, and we are grateful for your partnership. Forty-seven percent of the panelists were first timers this year, a sign that we are succeeding in attracting new talent into the process. The CDF panel service is among the most critical way for New Yorkers to help inform and shape our city's support for its cultural community. We look forward to your ongoing support and collaboration in this effort. Through these reforms last year, we had a record number of applicants, around 1,400, and a record number of grantees, 1,070, including 25 new organizations.
125.
125 new organizations, apologies. Reforms practically benefited small organizations led by those, led by or serving people of color. Example of cultural programs that receive CDF funding in the latest round includes the Create Change Artist Development Program, which fosters connection between community artists. It's the flagship initiative for the Brooklyn Delauntrum Project. The Theater Development Fund Accessibility Program provides, makes live theater accessible to guests with disabilities. They deliver opening caption and audio description for performances on and off Broadway, and provide accessible seating, including accommodation for service animals. They also offer autism-friendly performances of Broadway shows. Tap for Student reaches K-12 student with vision, hearing loss, vision, hearing loss through workshops in New York City School and inaccessible Broadway performances. At the Universal Temple for the Arts in Staten Island Jazz Festival, students, community members, and world-renowned artists participate in concert and artist-led workshop to galvanize community participation in the festival. UTA also offers free jazz music assembly programs to schools across Staten Island. Mind Builders Creative Arts Center in the Bronx provide low-cost classes in music and dance for students aged three to 24. They also offer public performances, such as Open House Street Festival, which brings the community together, and feature performances and classes by guest artists. The Asian American Arts Alliance has a monthly tongue hall, which are a cornerstone for Asian American creative community to promote creative project, share resources, and find collaborators. Since 1965, the New York Philharmonic has presented free outdoor performances, featuring their full orchestra and a roster of world-class guest artists in parks in each borough. Concerts also showcase local talent with an emphasis placed on student composers participating in the Philharmonic educational program. Van Cortlandt Park, programming services to diverse Bronx community. In FY '23, they supported the park's Barefoot Dancing Series, featuring bacha, merengue, West African drumming, Southwest Asian, and Mediterranean performances. They also serve Bronx teens with their Urban Ecology Teen Internship. The Lewis Latimer House in Queens operate the Latimer Now Project, a community outreach research project connecting with community residents, schools, and organizational partners through memoir workshops and STEAM workshops for families and students, and bilingual tours for the house in English, Cantonese, and Mandarin. Combe in Brooklyn champions African and diaspora culture as a vibrant legacy for people of African descent. Community engagement programming includes donation-based weekly classes for adults, creative movement classes for children. They develop and lead workshop programs and performances in local schools, senior centers, and community-based organizations. DCLA supports cultural and community engagement across all its funds and program. We have worked with the 34 members of the cultural institution groups for years as part of our far-reaching DEI efforts, partnering with cultural institutions to foster a cultural workforce that better reflects New York City diversity. A more diverse workforce further centered its work on requiring DEI plans for members of the CIG, making them among the first cultural institution to adopt such plan in the country. Public program is central to the work of the, is central to the city's relationship with the 34 members of the cultural institution group. For example, eight of the CIG members, including zoos, aquarium, botanical gardens, natural history and science museum, partner with the city council and Department of Education on Urban Advantage, a tremendously impactful science education initiative that reaches tens of thousands of middle school students each year. At Snug Harbor Cultural Center, the Chinese New Year Scholar Garden hosts a series of seasonal festivals and experimental workshops that activate the garden as a hub for intersectional cultural participation in the Chinese and Chinese-American traditions. Program includes the Autumn Moon Festival, the Lunar New Year Celebration, Brush and Ink Workshop, Lantern Making Workshop Tours, lecture, and other family activities. One of our favorite is the Carnegie Hall Neon Arts Program for the New York City Department of Probation, to integrate arts programming to young people in seven community-based probation center located throughout the city. Through their Public Works Program, Public Theater works with partner organization in all five boroughs and invites community members to take classes, participate in programming, and attend performances, and join in the creation of an ambitious work of practicatory theater. Public Works deliberately blur the line between professional artists and community members, creating theater that is of, by, and for the people. And I highly encourage everyone to see it. It is one of the most unique experiences you will ever have. The BAM Senior Cinema, Senior Social, and other dedicated programming, the organization work to make their campus a welcome and accessible place for all the New Yorkers as possible. Queens Theater Far-Reaching Theater for All Initiative commits to more, commits to more of fully-reached artists and audience member with disabilities from within Queens and throughout the city. Fostered through MoMA PS1 Home Room, their dedicated exhibition space for activation by community partners, the institution presents an integral intergenerational storytelling project with Mekila, a global feminist grassroots collective committed to bringing safety and power through healing justice, self-defense, and financial literacy. The New York Botanical Garden Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month Celebration offer on-site and virtual programs to spotlight the importance, contribution, and histories of plants and people making up this diverse community with educators, gardeners, and community partners. DCLA Capital Program supports new construction and equipment purchases for organizations of all shapes and sizes, ensuring that our city's cultural facilities maintain a world-class and accessible, maintain world-class and accessible access for all New Yorkers. In FY '24, the Capital Program contributed over $222 million to nearly 80 cultural capital projects across the five boroughs, including $117 million from the mayor, $79.3 million from the city council, and $26.5 million from the five borough presidents. Our Materials for the Arts Program is another major way DCLA supports nonprofits, educator, and city agencies with public programming to engage New Yorkers across the city. MFTA 4,700 members make up a huge community of public service providers rooted in cultural programming. MFTA collects 1.5 million pounds, 1.5 million pounds of donated materials valued at over $10 million, and distribute it to their members last year, free of charge as always, making a real difference in the bottom line for programming possibilities for these organizations. In addition to serving thousands of people each year from their warehouse in Long Island City, MFTA has been making efforts to meet even more New Yorkers where they are. Earlier this year, we teamed up with New York City Public School, Arts Office, and Snug Harbor Cultural Center on Staten Island for donation events that delivers supplies to dozens of local educators. This spring, we also launched MFTA After Hours, a new initiative that keeps the warehouse open for evening shopping so that more DOE teachers can visit the warehouse once the school day ends. In all, over 10,000 students and 2,000 teachers and community educators were instructed by MFTA teaching artists last year. MFTA also supply groups aiming to help the most needed combat inequality. MFTA has been a critical source of supplies for the city agencies and nonprofit, working to support asylum seekers arriving in our city. This week, the team at MFTA is also dropping off donations of codes to the shed for an event they are hosting on Saturday to support asylum seekers. DCLA Public Art Unit, which commissions permanent public art and manages public artists in residency and New York City Canvas Program, also centers community engagement in its approach to creating public art. One recent commission artist, Vanessa Hermine, who will be creating a permanent artwork for the Charlie Chisholm Rec Center in East Flatbush. Ms. Hermine is going to create the Brooklyn Museum of Love and Wonder, embarking on a series of community engagement that will directly shape the final artwork. Few, if any, other programs that commission permanent public works engage in this level of community engagement. Inviting residents into the process is a meaningful way to generate investment in the results. Percent for art panels are another way we invite public into participating in the commissioning process. Panels include representatives from the community board, local leaders, and other members of relevant communities, giving them a seat at the table for decisions that have profound effect on our public realm. New York City cultural groups aren't isolated institutions, they are fundamentally part of New York City's communities. They are places of employment, enjoyment, and community connection. There are also community hubs that offer relief services, as we have seen after national disasters, notably the COVID-19 pandemic. DCLA focused on fostering diversity, equity, and inclusion in our cultural community and in our own programs. It is at the core an effort to ensure that the city cultural community continues to reflect, connect, and serve our city's diverse residents. Thank you for the opportunity to present this testimony. I am happy to answer your questions after a sip of water.
There you go. Thank you for your testimony. What is, I'll give you a second to hydrate. What is the distribution by borough of current DCLA CDF grants?
The distribution, to your point, is very proportional to the number of grantees we receive. You mentioned in your statement that 23% of the grantees were in Brooklyn and 60% were in Manhattan. That correlates to the number of applications we receive. What we noticed is that most of the applications come from Manhattan and Brooklyn, but when you look at all the grants that were administered, it's exactly to the percentage of applicants that we received. it's exactly to the percentage of applicants that we receive. What we would like to see is more applications from other boroughs. The way to address this problem is to encourage other boroughs to submit applications. That way, we'll shift the percentage of applicants and applications that we award. It's it's very good to be in partnership with you on this, and you know your district better than anyone else. And and so we're asking all the council members to continue to push the message to encourage your nonprofit partners in your community and near district to submit application. It is the best driver to change the narrative.
Sure. And uh, we know from your testimony from our hearing that we had together in September that of the one hundred and twenty-five arts and cultural organizations newly funded by CDF grants in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, four were in the Bronx, four in Staten Island, fifteen in Queens, forty in Brooklyn, and sixty-two in Manhattan. Uh, how do you think those numbers represent equity and geographic distribution of new grants? And can you walk me through, I guess based off of your last answer, how you're continuing to work on expanding outreach within, uh, you know, the other outer boroughs that do not have as much representation or 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 grants from from CDF?
We we recognize that there is a significant um inequitable way of distribution. One of the things that we will be doing in the agency is doing more in-person outreach. We always do our webinars. We will be adding ten more outreach, which will include webinars, coffee table chats, and five in-person outreach efforts. So we understand that it is proportional. We want to encourage more applicants to participate, and we're gonna take it on ourselves to be more engaged in community personally and ask the the council and the borough president's offices to encourage people to apply. The numbers will shift when the number of applications we receive improve from out of boroughs.
Great. And I I know we've talked about this often, but you know, always here to help as well as my colleagues in the council to to provide uh, a- announcements that that you guys are putting out there within our our newsletters, within info that is located in our our our, you know, physical offices as well, so that we are doing our part and making sure that we're getting the word out. Under the mayor's November Plan, uh, CDF is facing a two-point-six-million-dollar reduction. How will this impact DCLA's current outreach initiatives?
In light of the fiscal constraints the city faces due to the end of the federal COVID stimulus and the ongoing migrant crisis and other financial challenges, we expect that we will be physically constrained in what we can do. Um, we are asking our constituents to champion the cause with state and federal government, to ask them to provide the funding that we need so that we can con- continue the great programming that we've been doing for the previous years. Um, it will have a tremendous effect. We are being very judicious in how we make these cuts. We are mandated by by our OMB office to be very, 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 very smart. So we are taking time to look at everything and try to make really, really, really smart decisions that will have the least effect on the grantees. Make no doubt about it. It will happen. We're just trying to do the best we can so that we can move forward with as little pain as possible.
Can you walk me through any real-world examples about how these cuts will impact organizations that are currently doing, who are currently doing uh expansions to their their programming or or trying to provide outreach to to New Yorkers? Do you have any real-life examples of of what these cuts and how these cuts will impact some of the work, the programmatic work that they're doing?
Absolutely. Um, organizations, I can give you an example. The Brooklyn Academy of Music, they're reducing the amount of programs and they do um the public theater. They have, a lot of organizations are reducing productions. Um, there've been organizations that are laying people off. Even yesterday, we're getting calls from organizations that are stressing to us that they are feeling the tension from these cuts. They're feeling the tensions from the change in our economic environment. I I I think my own Assistant Commissioner for Public for Funding would like to say something.
Uh, just to confirm that unfortunately, the Program Services Unit has not yet been able to release the notification awards for FY twenty-four. So unfortunately, our organizations um do not know the impact of the cuts. Certainly at the Culture of Three call, which was referenced yes earlier in this testimony or at this hearing, you know, there's a lot of concern in the field. Um, and we are hearing that, and we are trying to move forward in the most mindful and strategic way possible for all concerned.
How is DCLA working with organizations to advocate for state and federal funding or provide them with support in applying for other grants?
We are meeting with our partners constantly and having conversations. We are looking at ways that we can help with the outreach efforts to the state and federal government. Uh, so we're very much part of the conversation because we understand that everything will affect the way we do business. Every aspect of New York City will be challenged by this. So we are passionate talking to our our nonprofit partners and other government agencies of how we can to figure out ways that we can help support the cause.
Do you know when you'll have a plan in terms of how to assist arts and cultural organizations who will be impacted by these cuts?
We we are developing many plans. It's hard to say. A lot of it is rolling along slowly. We are now working on a plan for the creative sector so that um we can help alleviate certain problems when they come to us with certain issues. Um, Culture at Risk, we're calling it, so it's in development. We're looking at how we can call as all government agencies to help with these own crises. It's not fully big because everything is changing. Everything is different. So we're in the process of deliberating what's the best approach.
Sure, but I I know the November Plan and the announcement from the mayor came out, you know, nearly three weeks ago in terms of, you know, these these cuts. And a lot of these cultural organizations are reaching out to my office and the office of my colleagues about worrying about how these cuts will impact them. So I'm just, I would love to hear a timeline that DCLA has in in order, that that you guys are working on and providing that assistance to some of these these cultural organizations who are reaching out to us. Do you have any timeline in terms of when there'll be uh any type of 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 support, whether it's, you know, putting them in the right direction for applying towards state grants, federal grants, things of that nature?
We'll have to get back to you on that. Um, it's a rolling conversation and and things change every day. And it's a philosophical discussion about what's the right thing to do. So we're not at liberty right now to tell you, but we'll get back to you at the.
Sure. And sorry to push harder, but in terms of things are changing every day, are are things changing every day in terms of, you know, these cuts may not come into fruition that we're potentially seeing? Or or what's specifically changing every day?
No, what is right? How do we make the right decisions? Um, we're here, I mean, you know, we have groups that have different expectations, different responsibilities. So we're trying to be really, really, really judicious in the decisions that we make so that we can serve the field and deliver for everyone with as little pain as possible.
Okay. Uh, move on to my next round of questioning. So Create NYC called out the importance of reaching New Yorkers with disabilities. I believe that was Objective Three. Immigrants living in New York City, Objective Four, and older adult, older New Yorkers, so Objective Six, and proposed a variety of specific strategies for accomplishing these objectives. How do you feel these populations are faring based on the awarding of CDF grants?
Um, we are supporting organizations that that are doing great, great work in the community. Just to give you a few examples, um, Collab Theater Groups, which work with disability individuals, which um they offer theater classes, workshops, community events. Um, ID Studio Theater works with immigrants' community. It's a South-based Brown's organization. They work with nonprofit immigrants. Um, they also offer social justice development program. Um, Cool Culture, which comes out of New Brooklyn, New York. They do a fantastic program with underserved communities to get them into museums. Um, it creates an opportunity for folks who would not go to the Met to have that experience. So we believe that the organizations that we support, they're in the rooms on on the on the ground doing the work that we are supporting, and it's doing very well.
In your testimony, you name a variety of ways DCLA has worked on outreach and expanding programming across the city. What obstacles have this age has you as DCLA faced in providing events and programs to underserved communities?
Well, funding is always an issue, right? We want to do more with more. Um, but we have done things like increase the minimum funding for organizations who are working in this area. Um, but the organizations themselves do a fantastic job. Uh, just to give you an example, um, the Met Teen State, um, the Met Program, the organization, you know, these are small organizations. They are out in the community inviting students um into their buildings. Another example is on Project Art. It's an organization, a small organization in Brooklyn, and they are advocating and partnering with New York City Public Libraries where they are going in to the communities to do the work. Um, but just to give you another example, um, the Caribbean, the organization groups grown into a multifaceted organization that informs, educates, and entertains people about the Caribbean culture. I myself, and I'm an immigrant from the Caribbean, so it's always a pleasure to see um, my culture represented, and there are organizations who are doing that work.
And and how has DCLA worked with other agencies? For example, libraries for their cultural past program, uh, the Department for the Aging for Older Adult Outreach, the MTA for potential transit options for those with mobility needs. How has DCLA worked with some of these organizations to support other organizations and their community outreach?
We're very much actively involved in working with other organizations. To give you an example, just yesterday, we partner with DOT to host a weapon, a webinar on the Open Streets um program to ensure that our cultural partners can partner in it. Um, we work with the Department of Education on their after-school programs, and we also work with MFTA. Um, we also recently work with the Neon Project that's run by Carnegie Hall and the Department of Probation, that in my, as my testimony uh stated, they are in seven probation centers, teaching young people arts and culture and providing experiences for them.
And and how is DCLA working with larger organizations like Carnegie Hall and Alvin Ailey to help them in supporting their outreach efforts?
The larger organizations, they are driving their mission. We support them and they support smaller organizations. For example, Teen Takes the Met is a larger organization that drives a project that's more smaller organizations gonna participate in and offer tabling so that they can bring their experience to a larger community through this experience.
Sure. For, I guess more specifically, how is the agency, DCLA, working to support larger organizations in supporting smaller organizations with expanding their reach in the city? Is there any uh agency support within that, or is it solely based off of funding and then what those larger larger organizations do with their own?
Yeah, we we fund programs that they describe that brings other entities into their buildings. Um, funding is our greatest asset, so we try to be smart in the programs that we support. Um, a lot of the organized, larger organizations, especially the CIGs, they have robust programming to bring smaller organizations and underserved communities into their building. So we identify programs that they're doing that meets our guidelines for equitable equitability, diversity, inclusion, and 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 serving the underserved.
And how is DCLA working with small organizations that may have a limited capacity for outreach and expanding their reach across the city?
One of the reasons, one of the best ways we can do it, and it comes right back to funding, is through grants. We raised this the floor from five thousand to ten thousand dollars, which allows our small organizations to survive. They have to be in the game to order to offer these services. So that was one of the ways we did it. We also create an opportunity for them to get multi-year grant. A small organization being secure to have funding over that three-year period is a great way for them to know that they will be around and they can go into the community and over offer long-term support.
Any questions from my colleagues? As council members just have?
Yeah. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, I wanted to find out, um, do cultural institutions or extensions of public schools, they have a lot of programming. As the Education Chair, I'm concerned, what's the impact of these budget cuts with these intersections of education and cultural institutions?
It will, it will, there will be some impact. As you know, libraries are um reducing their hours. Um, student groups will have some challenges going forward, but we all have to meet this moment. Um, and we're still trying to make really, really smart cuts to have as little significant adjustments as possible.
Small cuts, uh, that makes me nervous. That really makes me nervous.
It's the environment we find ourselves in. So I, we are a strong, resilient community, the cultural community, the city, and we will bounce back. This is tightening our belts and figuring out ways to be creative and 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 it's what make New York special and New York City special.
So is there any conversations with the chancellor on how we're gonna meet this moment in terms of academic loss for our students? We're we're still dealing with that. So how does, how does the impact? Are you working with the chancellor to make sure we soften the impact? Because these institutions provide the support that the students need, libraries, teen centers, access to technology, and all of that.
We haven't engaged in anything substantive, um, but we're happy to engage in those conversations. We're still so focused on making sure that we do the right thing by as many of our grantees as possible on the funding side, and then we will start focusing on the longer-term, you know, solutions.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, and before we we wrap up, I guess just to, I felt inspired by councilman, the councilmember's questions, but has there been any pushback? And I know that you have some limitations in working in the admin, but you know, the cultural, cultural, DCLA and the the cultural sector within our city budget is responsible for less than one percent of the city budget, right? So even though these are are smaller cuts, in the grand scheme of things, you know, these smaller cuts uh deeply impact all of our cultural organizations, most especially the smaller ones when it comes to CDF grants. Has this been voiced to uh the the mayor about um how this will really uh put a constraint on expanding and blossoming our 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 cultural community, or are these cuts just taken as is?
Have you met our Commissioner Lori Combo?
Yes.
Yes, she is very passionate about funding for the arts. I think she only live, sleep, and breathe arts and culture funding. Of course, she is a big champion for saving us from the peg, for adding more resources to our pot, but we understand the environment in which we find ourselves. And so we are feverishly encouraging our constituency, our cultural partners to go out and advocate for federal and state government to do more. But internally, Commissioner Combo and our agency, we, every chance we get, we stress how important these cuts and significant they will be to our grantees.
But just to double check, nothing specifically yet about what to advocate for from the state and the federal government?
Really funding. Um, that's what we are always all talking about. How do we get the government to recognize that we're facing a crisis and on on many levels and assist?
Is that to like state-elected officials or in federal elected officials or?
We're having conversations with our partners in government and our cultural communities.
Okay. Guess what? That was my last question.
Oh, thank you for the opportunity. This is my first time doing this, and I appreciate you going so light on.
Uh, thank you so much. And now we are looking forward to hearing from members of the public. I know that we have both representatives of other arts and cultural organizations here today, as well as New Yorkers who would like to speak about REZO number four-two-three. So let's start calling our panels of witnesses. Christina, take it away.
Okay, our first in-person panel will be Lucy Sexton, Dohini Sampura, Kathy Lando, Lindsay Malickel, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, and Elizabeth Vendito. What? Five.
I really do have to keep it to two minutes today though, guys, okay?
Sorry? No.
You should be the next panel.
Hi, my name is Lucy Sexton, and I am with New Yorkers for Culture and Arts. Thank you for hearing my testimony today. Thank you for hearing my testimony today. You know, we heard great stories and saw great images in the videos. I just want to say that I was a Sukasa teacher, which means that I had the pleasure of teaching in a couple of senior centers. One of the stories that I tell is I had given this, I was teaching in Chinatown entirely non-English speaking, and I had given them as a prompt that they should tell a story about the time in their life they were most happy. This gentleman who hardly ever spoke started crying, and he talked about that he had been working in factories since he was 14 and that these classes in this senior center, gathering with his peers, were the happiest time he had experienced in his life. I'll tell another story. When I was younger, I taught kids in the NYCHA housing in the East Village. And we did dance with them, and they made up their own dances, and we took it to local music places, and they got to perform. At the end of it, Mirabai took my face in her hands, and she said, "You're coming back next year, right?" And I said, "Of course, of course." And the funding got cut, and I was not there next year. And it has haunted me for 30 years. That is what happens when you have all the great things that culture can do, and then the funding goes away as it is shrinking right now. I would like to lift up also that we are funded by the Department of Cultural Affairs, but cultural organizations, you know, as we were just talking, Councilmember Joseph was talking about, the DOE funds us. We also get money from the Department for the Aging. And we get money from the DYCD. So when all of those agencies get cut, we are getting cut in many different places. So it winds up to more than a 5%, more than a 15% cut to us because we depend on all of those income streams. I will also say that in terms of public funding and where it's most important, it is most important with small organizations in low-wealth communities. They have less access to resources, and it is data-proven that they are more dependent on public funding. So I join my colleagues in saying, please, no more peg cuts to culture. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Lucy.
Hello, I'm Lindsay Malakel, and I work at the New Victory New 42. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to submit this testimony on behalf of the New 42 and the New Victory Theater. We take deep pride in fulfilling our mission, which is to make extraordinary performing arts a vital part of everyone's life from the earliest years onward. Our research has really proven that early arts exposure can have a really positive impact on the socio-emotional development of young people, and yet many of the young people in New York City still face intense barriers to the arts and culture sector. I want to talk about two programs specifically today. The first is our Bring Your Family program, and the other is our education program. The Bring Your Family program is actually a partnership with NYCHA. Last year, we distributed over 1,000 free tickets to over 228 distinct families. We did onsite arts activities, and we're hoping to grow that as we go into this year and the next years. We're hoping to continue to partner with Chelsea's Fulton and Elliott Houses, Bronx Butler's Patterson and Mitchell Houses. We work with NYCHA and the Public Housing Community Fund to provide MTA travel vouchers as well as concession vouchers. These are all things that are dependent on public support, and they can only continue, let alone grow, if we continue to grow that support. The education program, which brings dynamic free in classroom arts education to around 150 school partners each year. 70% of those 150 schools serve large populations of students who live in low-income housing and low-income neighborhoods. For many of those students, our education program is the only in-school arts education that they will receive access to, the only one. When we think about what the impact of this kind of arts and culture work is, we want to think about what it does to the students who are in those schools, the thousands of students who can either be impacted or left behind. Accessibility for All continues to be a core value of our organization and most of our organizations. And we want to thank you for continuing to support that work as we bring that joy and the power across the city.
Hello, I'm Kathy Lando, Executive Director of Symphony Space. Thank you for welcoming us all here and being our advocates. We are a performing arts and arts education organization at 95th and Broadway, but our programs and our impact reach far beyond our immediate geography. This year, our audiences came to us from every borough across the city, including all nine districts represented by this committee, all 50 states, and 71 countries around the world. Our 151 staff members also represent every borough, and the more than 600 artists we presented on our stage last year also come from all across this city. We are our people, and that is really important. And then there are our classrooms. And this year, our Global Arts Program brought over 15,000 New York City public school students from 50 schools on a journey of exploration and celebration in the history and cultures of Africa, Latin America, Asia, and Native America. And our literacy program, All Right, served over 1,400 adult literacy students and celebrated its 30th anniversary. 340 of those adult students came from districts on this committee. So All Right took place in 10 public libraries, on five CUNY campuses, two DOE Adult Learning Centers, and in six community organizations throughout the boroughs, all completely free of charge. As for conveying our impact, I leave it to one of our students, Mary, who said, "I was illiterate all my life. I didn't know where to start or how to start. All Right opened up a whole new world to me." So that is what the arts do. Thank you for being there on our stages and in our classrooms. We are all opening up the world. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Chair Ose and members of the committee. My name is Elizabeth Vendito. I serve as the Director of Institutional Giving at the Museum of Jewish Heritage: A Living Memorial to the Holocaust. The museum educates visitors of all backgrounds about Jewish life before, during, and after the Holocaust. We teach New Yorkers about what unchecked hate and bigotry can do. Our exhibitions and education programs examine the richness of Jewish culture and history. Our work builds bridges between the city's communities and creates mutual respect and understanding. The museum makes arts and culture accessible to New Yorkers through free admission programs and our work inside city schools. This year, we have served over 16,000 New York City public school students. We provide free museum admission to public schools. We also organize free transportation to the museum for schools with financial need so that students in the outer boroughs have the same access to us as those located closer to our home in Battery Park. CUNY students and ID NYC cardholders also receive free museum admission. And we will host a CUNY Day at the museum on March 15. Last year, we brought our work inside city schools through a new peer-to-peer Holocaust education program. The Holocaust Educator School Partnership trains local college students to teach lessons on Holocaust history in public school classrooms. Then the schools come to the museum at no cost for an exhibition tour led by those college students. The program served 2,000 New York City public school students last year. It will serve 10,000 students this school year. Cultural organizations depend on city funding to provide quality, community-centered programming. I join my colleagues in the cultural institutions group and the entire cultural sector and ask that DCLA be spared from the next two rounds of the administration's peg cuts so that we continue to serve all New Yorkers.
Good afternoon, Chair Ose and members of the culturalists committee. My name is Dohini Sampura, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs at the American Museum of Natural History. As one of the largest cultural institutions in the city, AMNH understands the importance of having our programming accessible to all communities throughout the city. Community programming allows the museum to extend its educational reach beyond traditional museum visitors and provides opportunities for individuals who may not have access or the resources to visit us. We strive to engage underrepresented communities to spark curiosity and encourage a lifelong interest in science and the natural world through various community and educational programs, such as Discovery Days, Cool Culture, Culture Past, Urban Advantage, Lang Science Program, and the Science Research and Mentoring Program. My testimony highlights a lot of these programs, but I wanted to highlight two specifically, one being the Discovery Day and one being the Urban Advantage Program that Deputy Commissioner Murray talked about a little bit earlier. Since 2014, AMNH has been a proud partner with the New York City Council to offer families at NYCHA developments opportunities to participate in AMNH Discovery Days program. The program was developed to serve communities who might not normally consider visiting the museum or feel disenfranchised to visit the museum due to a variety of social factors, including cost, language barriers, physical geographic access, and or limited access to formal education. The program is designed for families from NYCHA developments to visit the museum and interact with museum scientists and educators, explore exhibition halls, and experience the ways in which the museum is an educational resource. AMNH hosts eight discovery sessions throughout the academic year, hosting as many as 100 individuals per session. We actually have one coming up on Saturday for Council District Six. We have over 245 people registered to come to the museum, which is phenomenal. Free transportation to and from the museum, as well as a life breakfast, is offered. Each family also receives vouchers to encourage them to return back to the museum. That's okay. Yes.
Thank you to this panel. Our next panel will be Lisa Gold, Kate Madigan, and Susan Hapgood.
Okay, I'm just gonna start. Good afternoon, Chair Ose and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm Lisa Gold, Executive Director of the Asian American Arts Alliance, and we are a 40-year-old organization that works to ensure greater representation, equity, and opportunities for AAPI artists and arts organizations. And I'm also a co-facilitator on the Culture at Three call, and I'm gonna be the honey penny who speaks the realness from that call yesterday, that there were people who said, "I don't think we're gonna make it." There were people that have very, very small organizations, immigrant BIPOC-led organizations. One of them said, "I have not paid my artists since October." These are not wealthy organizations. As Lucy stated, organizations like ours from these communities, BIPOC-led and serving, they don't have the support systems that predominantly white institutions have. They don't have the resources, they don't have the funds, and they do rely disproportionately on government funding from these sources. It is devastating. They are afraid they're not gonna make it through these cuts. So I am begging you, I'm part of my constituents in my community, that the DCLA be spared this. It's a small drop in the bucket compared to the overall city budget. You know, the Department of Cultural Affairs, so you know, my community, AAPI community, makes up about 18% of the city population. Yet we only receive less than 2% of DCLA funding. And the majority of that comes from the CDF. And, you know, cuts to that, they are disproportionately going to affect those organizations that the commissioner cited as lifting up, that we are helping communities by increasing their grants from 5,000 to 10,000. Well, we don't even know if we're getting that money. I have friends that are teaching artists that haven't been able to work. This is like a broad impact. This is deeply affecting people's livelihoods, the communities. I'm like totally going off script here. I'm not even talking about like the work that A4 did during the pandemic. Like with small amounts of money, $30,000, we impacted a quarter of a million people with anti-hate programs and supporting the AAPI communities with active creative care. Sorry, okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you, Committee Chair Chi Ose and councilmembers, for the opportunity to testify about cultural organizations' outreach into our city communities. I am Susan Hapgood, I know many of you, and I am Director of the International Studio and Curatorial Program, also known as ISCP, a nonprofit organization in North Brooklyn. We're getting ready to celebrate our 30th anniversary in 2024. We are embedded in a community of industrial businesses, warehouses, hard-working families, and artist workshops. We're a nonprofit housed in a former three-story printing factory, and our mission is to support the development of artists and curators from around the world and to introduce New York audiences to exceptional international and local art practices. We're open to all. We work hard to organize excellent contemporary art programming year-round, free of charge. We definitely contribute to the cultural fabric of our neighborhood, to the stability, the safety, and the education of our community. We attract visitors from all over the city. We have approximately 10,000 visitors per year, most from Brooklyn and from many other countries, too. People who participate in our programs come from Latin America, Europe, Asia, and Africa, as well as North America. Over the past year and a half, we have organized special events for nearby high schools, for public housing residents. We are two blocks from the Cooper Park NYCHA housing community and all of our neighbors, making them feel welcome, hosting special events for them alone. We are very actively reaching out to make sure that our many audiences know that our organization is doing programming for them. We want them to take advantage of all that's happening. We have a show on right now that is about the colonial era when the Dutch traded the island of Manhattan for an island in Indonesia that was the sole control of nutmeg and trade of nutmeg, which was worth more than gold at that time. I just want to add a note about potential budget cuts. Programming, well, you know what I was gonna say. All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Kate Madigan. I serve as the Government Relations Coordinator at the Public Theater. Nice to see you again. Thank you, Chair Ose, for convening this committee hearing to deliberate on the critical topic of arts and cultural organizations' outreach into New York City communities. And thank you again to the Deputy Commissioner for shouting out the Public Theater and their testimony. So my first example of how we engage with the community is Free Shakespeare in the Park. The Public Theater stewards of city-owned property in Central Park and downtown at Fort 25 Lafayette Street. We have reached 6 million people over the last 60 years, and this season, 2023, we welcomed nearly 80,000 New Yorkers and visitors from around the world to our productions. We continue to pursue ticket distribution strategies to reach a broadly diverse audience of New Yorkers, incorporating COVID-era innovations to our model of ticket outreach to create as many access points as possible throughout the five boroughs. We have dedicated lines for senior citizens in person with disabilities, and we are also working on expanding our accessibility access for New Yorkers in our Delacorte renovation programs. And another one of our programs that outreach into the community is our Hunts Point Children Shakespeare Ensemble, which for more than a decade has offered hundreds of elementary and middle school students the opportunity to develop their confidence, knowledge, and creativity through the transformative experience of bringing Shakespeare's words to life on stage. This 2022-2023 season, approximately 50 students engaged in eight months of study of Shakespeare's timeless tragedy Romeo and Juliet. This year culminated in the students crafting and performing a fully staged production of the play on May 19 at the Bronx Academy for Multimedia and the Teresa Lane Theater in Manhattan on May 21 for audiences totaling roughly 500 family members, friends, and teachers. And I would like to also end with saying, our mobile unit visits all five boroughs into local parks, and we bring that community programming free, and we hope to continue to expand and at least keep it on the docket of free programming throughout the years to come. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you to this panel. Our next panel will be Angel Hernandez, Robin Chatel, and Aya Hayashi.
Take care.
Good afternoon, I'm Angel Hernandez, Director of Government Relations for the New York Botanical Garden. Thank you, Chair Ose and members of the committee, for having me here. With over 130 years of serving the people of the Bronx, our institution has created programs to address the needs of our city's ever-changing communities. NYPD has always played a major role in the Bronx as a cultural anchor, where not only our scientific collections and exhibitions should be deemed as our main strength. Our Bronx Greenup Program, which celebrates 35 years, continues to be one of the main outreach programs where we provide horticultural education training and technical assistance to Bronx residents, community gardeners, and urban farmers. We're celebrating our latest partnership at Carol's Urban Community Farm located at NYCHA's Castle Hill Houses. There, Bronx Greenup will hire a farm coordinator, pilot youth programs for four- to six-year-olds, and to continue to build our pilot youth programs for four- to six-year-olds, and to continue to build out farm beds for the community. Addressing food insecurity in the Bronx, Bronx Greenup also coordinates the work of dozens of community gardens into six Bronx farm hubs to donate over 25,000 seedling plants to Bronx community gardens. We also launched the Bronx Neighbors Program during the first summer of quarantine back in 2020, where now we've received over 120,000 Bronx residents to come at no cost to experience our engaging exhibitions and landscapes over the years. NYBG also provides over 500 full-time positions, in which half are Bronx residents, and 175 are DC 37 Union jobs. Cultural organizations depend on city funding to provide the sort of quality, community-centered programming that I just described today and many more. I join my colleagues in the Cultural Institutions Group and the entire cultural sector and ask DCLA to spare us from the next two rounds of administrative cuts, so we can continue this work in the Bronx community and in New York at large. Thank you very much.
Hello. Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Ose and the rest of the committee for having us and inviting me. My name is Robin Chatel, and I'm representing independent cultural producers. And I have been working in the public room for many years, since 2005, when I launched Riverside Park Summer at the Hudson Festival and invited a diverse range of New York performing artists and arts organizations to perform on PRI and 78th Street. And currently, as moving cultural projects, I collaborate with cultural, educational, civic, and community organizations who want to activate their public spaces with arts and cultural programming. I also provide capacity building and technical assistance to guide these groups as they use the arts programming to bring people together and address persisting inequities in their neighborhoods. A recent project is I'm a programming consultant with City Parks Foundation for their green fund commissioning program, and where they asked over hundreds of their parks, small parks around the city, if they would need support bringing in performing arts programming, and they said yes. I'm working with 29 groups, which is a really new step in spreading the arts to communities. In 2020, when indoor venues were shuttered during COVID, you know, I got to travel to every, all five boroughs, all five. I was in East New York, from East New York, Brooklyn, to St. George, Staten Island, from Astoria, Queens, to Manhattan's Upper West Side, and I worked alongside volunteer stewards of public spaces to help them create and develop an envisioned programming. I produced and helped produce over 100 performing arts programs in public spaces all around the city. And this work was supported by initiatives from the mayor's office, City Artist Corps, the Open Sheets and Open Culture Permit, which Mr. Varey, council member, and both of you have pushed to push through. And I've really been changed by this work. You know, when I work alongside community leaders and volunteers stewards of public space, who really believe also in the transformative power of the arts, you know, to strengthen individual community bonds and support emotional health, just like I have believed my whole career as an artist, I'm really humbled by their resolve and their commitment to connect their neighbors through cultural programming. And not only as passive participants, but really--
Sorry. We do have--
Oh, sorry. Okay. I just wanted to say that, you know, I don't get funded for this work. I know the Department of Cultural Affairs funding organizations, and the artists that I work with get that funding. Please continue that funding in order to really bring the arts to all five boroughs and to little neighborhoods and communities. Thank you.
I'm ready when they are. Good afternoon, Councilmember Ose and committee members. Thank you for your advocacy and leadership on behalf of arts and culture in New York City. My name is Dr. Aya Esther Hayashi, and I am the Development Director at People's Theater Project, also known as PTP. PTP is the largest performing arts organization in Manhattan, north of Harlem, and a steering committee member for the Latinx Arts Consortium of New York. We at PTP create theater with and for immigrant communities to build a more just and equitable world. As an immigrant and Latina-led organization, our neighbors of all ages, backgrounds, and immigration status in Washington Heights, Inwood, and the Bronx trust and rely upon us. At PTP, theater is our tool in the work of social justice, amplifying and humanizing the stories of New York City immigrants. We create and produce original theater by immigrant artists of color. Through our PTP Academy and partnerships with 24 schools and CBOs, we serve over 1,000 multilingual learners every year, free of charge. We are grateful for the support that we receive from the city council and DCLA every year. This funding is essential to our ability to serve your constituents. Because of this, the peg cuts announced last month concern us greatly. PTP and so many of our colleague arts organizations uptown rely not just on DCLA funding, but also funding from DYCD, DOE, and other city agencies. What is a tiny cut in the scheme of the overall city budget will be devastating, severely impacting our ability to provide service to our immigrant community, particularly our multilingual learners. Today, I join my colleagues in the cultural sector and ask that DCLA be spared from the next two rounds of the administration's peg cuts. We are asking you to partner with us and work towards creative solutions. Surely you can see that there is an abundance of creativity in this room and online. Consider that the impact of city council funds will go so much further if invested in cultural workers who are a direct link to your constituents. We create safe and inclusive spaces for all New Yorkers. City funding is essential and transformative. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you to this panel. Our next panel will be Roy Pingell, Mary Nolan, Thomas Gogan, and Hillary Exter. Hillary left, okay. Thank you.
You can begin when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairman Ose, and all committee members for holding this hearing. My name is Roy Pingell. I'm from Queens and a member of DC 37 Retirees Association and Move the Money NYC. My partner and I have three young adult sons. We are concerned about the city's delivery of essential services. My partner, a public school employee, is dismayed by the prospect of serious cutbacks. I'm concerned, as a retired city worker, about protecting my senior healthcare benefits. We support Resolution 423 because it seeks to change the narrative of funding war to the question of what about our communities? According to the National Priorities Project, New York City residents' federal tax dollars account for over $36 billion of the U.S. military budget in 2023. The federal government spends over 50% of its discretionary budget on endless wars and expensive weapons. Passing Resolution 423 would put the council on record urging cuts to the bloated Pentagon War budget so the funds can be used for much-needed services that are being cut. As the mayor calls for severe cuts to city agencies and services, now more than ever is the time for creative thinking and action to identify new revenues and underutilized resources. Let us leave no stone unturned in facing the fiscal challenges to come. There are unturned stones in the Pentagon where there can be found billions of our dollars slated for war. We need to move that money to our communities. This resolution calls on changing the national focus from funding war to addressing our neglected cities. I urge you, committee members, to vote for Resolution 423. Thank you very much.
Thank you for holding these hearings. My name is Mary Nolan. I'm with Move the Money. The Pentagon budget for 2024 is $886 billion, and it has grown over the past several years. The U.S. spends more on its military than the next 10 countries combined. The military budget accounts for over 15% of federal discretionary spending. 18% of every tax dollars you and I pay goes to the Pentagon. The New York City, on the other hand, is asked to practice austerity. The New York City budget was $110 billion in 2023, and Mayor Adams wants to cut it by 20% or $22 billion. These drastic cuts will hurt every single city agency, institution, and program. Let's look at one that is dear to me as a lifelong educator. The 220 branches of the New York City Public Library system receive 37 million visitors a year. They circulate nearly half a billion. Books and other materials provide 7,000 public commuters and offer hundreds of thousands of classic programs and services to citizens of all ages, races, and classes, or to everyone, citizen and noncitizen. They are a vital and impressive part of our civic infrastructure and education system. Yet Mayor Adams wants to cut the library funding by the same percentage as others. This will force libraries to close on Sundays. It's going to start next week in Brooklyn and reduce spending on materials programming and building. Thereby, the city will gain a meager. These savings will save the city 0.02% of its budget, doing massive damage for minimal gain. Mayor Adams claims he has to make these drastic cuts to pay for the migrant crisis, but the crisis isn't about migrants. The problem is the obscenely large military budget. Redirecting even a small proportion of the $886 billion the Pentagon gets would make up and cover the $22 billion Adams wants to cut. We urge you to vote for Resolution 423 and help us shift our federal spending priorities and serve our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Ose, for holding this hearing. I appreciate that Carolina Rivera's leadership in this as well. I'm Tom Gogan. I'm a member of the National Writers Union. Let me try again. There we go. Okay. Thank you, Chair Ose. I'm Tom Gogan from the National Writers Union, a member of Move the Money New York City. Thank you for holding this hearing. Glad to see our lead sponsor, Carolina Rivera, with us today, too. I've been an organizer in the city for over four decades and now retired, but I've been spending a lot of time working on this issue. This week's Finance Committee hearing on Monday highlighted the tremendous problems the city faces. And in terms of the immediate problem, yes, we've got to find new resources, and that can come from a number of different sources. But the primary underlying problem, structural problem, is that we have a military budget that's out of control at the national level, and we need to get those resources down to our community. President Eisenhower and Reverend Martin Luther King both warned us about the danger of an ever-expanding military budget in the military-industrial complex. U.S. military spending now is approaching almost a trillion dollars per year. It's greater than the next 10 countries combined. It fuels a self-fulfilling prophecy of endless war. And by the way, the Pentagon is the world's single-largest polluter on the planet. Military jobs can also wipe out whole civilian economies. For example, commercial shipbuilding, right? Just think of the Navy Yard in Brooklyn. It wiped out not only thousands of jobs at the end of World War II, but our communities surrounding that area were really hard hit. Many who lived through that period paid a terrible price, a price that was paid again during the fiscal crisis that began in the mid-'70s. New York City and state depend to a great degree on federal funding for public services and infrastructure. We are paying something like $30 to $35 billion a year of our federal taxes that go straight to the Pentagon, thanks to bilateral congressional action. That has to change. Our city council must urge Congress to redirect a significant portion of our New York City taxes from the military to needed public goods and services, which are mostly provided by government and nonprofit groups. Passing Resolution 423 is a modest step in that direction, but it will put New York City in the lead on this. Meanwhile, we must all work to reverse the mayor's cuts. I don't need to do the whole litany of services, but I will mention homeless veterans. We now have over 2,000 of them on our city streets, and there are so many needs in all of our hardest-hit communities. We all know where they are around the city. Thank you so much. I have written testimony I want to submit.
Thank you to this panel. We're going to move to a remote panelist, and then we'll return back to in-person testimony. Leah Johnson, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Ose and members of the committee. I'm Leah Johnson. I'm Executive Vice President and Chief Communications Marketing and Advocacy Officer at Lincoln Center for the Performing Arts. We am also a member of the Cultural Institutions Group. We are one of 11 arts and arts education nonprofits on the 16-acre Lincoln Center campus. Lincoln Center for the Performing Arts is consistently exploring new ways to confront barriers to entry and better reflect, uplift, and rejoice in the vibrant communities of New York City in all aspects of our artistic and civic work. The vast majority of Lincoln Center for the Performing Arts programming is either free or choose what you pay, starting at $5. After a successful pilot in 2022, we have seen sold-out houses drawing in diverse audiences. During Summer for the City, for a third year, our campus was transformed into New York City's largest free summer festival. This year, we welcomed 380,000 people to campus, with 75% of audiences new to Lincoln Center, 54% identifying as BIPOC, and 25% of the attendees from Bronx, Brooklyn, Queens, and Staten Island. Serving audiences living with disabilities is built into our venues, programming, and all aspects of audience experience with comprehensive access accommodations for performances, chill-out spaces, visual directions, alternatives to standing in line, and welcome staff trained in inclusive practices. We have programming such as our Lincoln Center moments for older adults, access ambassadors, providing year-long school partnerships, and Passport for the Arts for young people with disabilities, and a big umbrella festival for young people living with autism and their families. We have a multi-pronged, multilingual engagement strategy to reach communities throughout New York City with targeted ads. We have also participated--
The time is expired.
Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Moving back to in-person testimony, our next panel will be Theodore Reich, Eileen Bandell, Tarak Koff, and Gloria Brandman.
Hello, I'm Tarak Koff. I'm a member of Veterans for Peace. I'm going to focus mainly, but not exclusively, on what Carolina Rivera's Move the Money Resolution 423 means to veterans. Veterans were once willing to sacrifice everything, even their lives, believing that the wars that they had to kill and die for were just noble and necessary. Only later did many veterans realize that there is no such thing as a good war, nothing that justified killing, maiming people, animals, and even destroying entire countries. They realized, like the American public, that they had been lied to and betrayed by those in positions of power who profit from war. New York City, get this, pays more than $36 billion a year in taxes that go to the military and directly to fund war. President Biden now wants $14 billion of that to go to supplying Israel with more bombs, explosive tank shells, and weapons that will continue to rain death on the people of Gaza and the West Bank. That's besides the $3.8 billion every year that goes to Israel. Meanwhile, there are 85,000 homeless people in New York City, including over 22,000 children and over 16,000 veterans living in poverty, and over 1,000 homeless veterans. Not only do these tax dollars not go to supporting endless homelessness, they're instrumental in helping to cause these poverty issues, especially for veterans, but for all of us. These are statistics, but they represent real flesh-and-blood human beings. There are positive applications for all this tax money. We could effectively address all New York City's problems and still have money left over. Resolution 423, if passed, could move significant funds away from the U.S. military budget, and this is weaponry that kills and keeps killing for decades, even after the war is over. If we pass Resolution 423, this money can fund social services to support the unmet basic human needs of New York City residents. I only have a couple of seconds. I want to say this one thing. I'm sorry. I'm going to say this. The great American prophet Martin Luther King said at Riverside Church in 1967, "A nation that continues, year after year, to spend more money on military defense than on programs of social uplift is approaching spiritual death." He also said, "We are confronted with the fierce urgency of now and this unfolding conundrum of life and-- of life and history. There is such a thing as being too late." Passed 423. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Ted Rice. I reside on Lower East Side of Manhattan, and I'd like to first thank the committee for having this hearing this afternoon, and I wanted especially to thank our council member, Carlina Rivera, for introducing this Resolution 423 just over a year ago, although we had an earlier version that died in the council because the then-chair of the committee would not put it on the agenda. So I'm here today to urge the committee to approve Resolution 423. This resolution is actually very mild urging. It's a very mild urging of the Congress and the president to reduce military spending to fund social services. Reliable sources indicate that the actual annual military spending is $1.5 trillion, far in excess of the close to $900 billion budgeted for military spending. Again, according to the National Priorities Project, nearly 2/3 of the federal discretionary budget goes to militarized federal programs, leaving just 1/3 for our communities, a sliver some lawmakers want to cut even further. I think we all know this. It is shameful when domestic priorities never get equal footing with military spending. The Congress and president endlessly prioritize violence, the military, and war over peace and human needs, education, affordable housing, public health, scientific and medical research, solutions to catastrophic climate change, homelessness, et cetera. The mayor, the recent announcement of drastic cuts in all city services, a call for the city council to act. It is high time for the mayor and the council to call for more support and funding for the federal government.
Thank you.
All we got to do is listen to the earlier testimony. Cutting the budget, cutting the budget. Nobody knows where their money's going to come from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Eileen Bardell. I live on Staten Island, and I am a member of Peace Action of Staten Island. I am grateful to have the opportunity to address the city council today, to express why I believe it is important, excuse me, that Resolution 423 is passed by the city council. As we witness the seemingly endless wars going on all over the world, the suffering of children is happening right before our eyes. This is what war does. As long as our tax dollars are used to continue these wars, we bear a responsibility for the results. But we don't have to travel abroad to learn about the plight of innocent children. According to some statistics, 1 in 5 children in Staten Island is food compromised. Nationwide, it is estimated to be 1 in 6. Without access to affordable and nutritious food, a child's ability to learn and begin to build a successful future is severely undermined. Food insecurity continues to rise, especially within Black and Latino communities. Homelessness. In an article written by Tony Clausen and published 10/26/2022, more than 104,000 public school students in New York City were homeless during the last school year. 1 in 10 children lived in shelters, in cars, in abandoned buildings, or outside because of rising rents and housing shortages. Abroad or right here at home, this is what happens when Congress spends our tax dollars for defense spending instead of taking care of people's needs. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Gloria Brandman. I'm in the UFT, and I work with Move the Money. And I'd like to thank the committee for holding this hearing, especially those of you that are still listening. I served in New York City public schools for over 30 years. I'm also in a caucus called Retiree Advocate. We're in the Retired Teachers Chapter of the UFT, and we are one of the 60 supporting organizations of this bill. I also was a special educator, and I want to talk a little bit about how this important reso is to the education of all of our students, especially those with disabilities. The students and families that I was privileged to work with needed extra services to succeed in school and in their lives. Many came on school buses, they needed paraprofessionals to get to school, and also in the classrooms. Smaller class size, additional teaching supports were also necessary, and of course, extra programs such as art, after-school, preschool, and computer technology help ensure happy and thriving children. These are all slated to be cut by the mayor. City officials had said that the DOE will be cut by $547 million this fiscal year and $600 million next year. Why should any of our students be deprived of what they need to succeed in the richest country in the world? These cuts should not be necessary because the money is clearly here. Last year, Congress voted to approve up to an 877 bill in military spending for '23, and in '24, 56% of the federal discretionary budget will go to the military buildup. Who benefits? Military contractors, weapon manufacturers, not our children, our seniors, our poor working people? No. So Resolution 423 mandates the city council call on Congress and the president to move significant funds away from the military budget in order to fund programs to benefit us, so New York City can set an example for the entire country, and especially set an example for our children.
Thank you so much.
Do the right thing and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you to this panel. Our next panel will be Charlotte Phillips, Marian Phyllis Cunningham, Marian Ronan, and Marsha Newfield.
You know what Tupac said? They got money for the war, but they can't feed the poor.
You may begin whenever.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Phillips, a Brooklyn resident, and I want to thank the committee for holding a hearing on this important and very timely resolution. I'm a pediatrician, and I worked for my entire career in the New York City public hospital system, most recently in Bushwick as part of the North Brooklyn Health Network. I am also the chairperson of Brooklyn for Peace. Among the reasons that I retired from clinical practice was so that I could focus my energy on working for the reallocation of our national resources, away from military buildup and toward the well-being of children. I am very disappointed by the mayor's recent announcement of a 5% cut in all New York City services. I am especially alarmed by the proposed decrease in resources allocated to health and hospitals, as well as to the Behavioral Health Emergency Assistance Response Division, which provides mental health services. As a pediatrician on the front line, I would see on a daily basis how often these services are needed and can make the difference between life and death. But the real question is, why are these cuts even necessary? Why shouldn't the New York City Council push Mayor Adams in line with the U.S. Conference of Mayors to call for more funding from the federal government? In 2022, the U.S. spent $877 billion, more than the next 10 countries combined, on military buildup. In fiscal year 2024, 56% of the federal discretionary budget will go to military buildup, and this is a time when our country is not at war, when the greatest threat to our security are from the climate crisis, not from any foreign military power. Resolution 423 would mandate that the city council call on Congress and the president to move significant funds away from military buildup into vitally needed social services and to hold in-depth public hearings on the basic human needs of city residents that are unmet. I urge this committee and the council as a whole to pass Resolution 423. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much.
My name is Marian Ronan.
Mary, you're going to press the button. Thank you.
Sorry.
No worries.
My name is Marian Ronan, and I'm a resident of District 40 in Brooklyn and a member of Brooklyn for Peace, and I'm here to strongly support Resolution 423. Let me begin by saying I am a grandmother of four, and I am terrified about their futures because of climate change and other environmental destruction. Consider what we could do with even 10% of the current U.S. military budget of $877 billion. How about continuing the community composting that is scheduled to end this month? And consider the greenhouse gas emissions that continuing that composting could prevent. Secondly, I grew up in an uneducated, working-class family, and I now have a PhD. One thing that contributed enormously to this was the many hours I've since spent reading at our local public library. But now, because of inadequate federal funding for migrants, New York is cutting back on library hours and days. How much of that $877 billion military budget would it take to care for those migrants and keep our neighborhood libraries fully open? Finally, let me say that I am a practicing Catholic. Now, there's been a lot of talk recently about religious freedom, bakers not being required to bake gay wedding cakes and so forth. Well, the head of my church, Pope Francis, has declared that not only the use of nuclear weapons, but even the possession of them is immoral. But it is projected that our country will spend 3/4 of a trillion dollars on nuclear maintenance and upgrading over the next 10 years, and I am obligated to pay taxes for these immoral weapons. What about my religious freedom? Please, pass Resolution 423. Demand that our federal government move the money from militarism to our people's needs.
Thank you.
It's on, right? Okay. I'm Marsha Newfield. I'm a retired CUNY adjunct lecturer. I taught English for 30-plus years at BMCC and was the VP for part-timers at the Professional Staff Congress for 13 years. PSC is the union that represents 30,000 faculty and staff at CUNY. Now, CUNY needs so much support, even though a jewel of the city, its 25 colleges providing opportunities for 500,000 students each year, most of whom go on to work in the city and pay taxes. It has been underfunded for years. I know the city council has increased funding for the community colleges, which are in its charge, and we are grateful, but we need more. Austerity is the common excuse, but there is no excuse for this undervaluing. The $838 billion or even more military budget is so excessive, we could lop off a mere 10% and attend to so many community needs. For example, the national ratio of counselors to students is 1 to 1,000. At CUNY, it's 1 to 2,700. Adjuncts who teach 77% of the courses have no job security or insurance after retirement. Our current contract demands include intellectual property rights and greater equity between titles. At Move the Money, an outgrowth of U.S. Labor Against the War, we are connected to an even deeper impulse: to redirect the impulse to war. As Aldous Huxley wrote decades ago, "War is not a law of nature, nor even a law of human nature. It exists because men wish it to exist." And we know that it doesn't have to be that way.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Wait, is it on? Is it on? Yes. Thank you for Chairman O'Shea and members of your committee for hearing testimony on this resolution. My name is Marian Phyllis Cunningham. I'm a member of Move the Money Committee. I'm a retired licensed professional nurse and a nurse educator, and I'm a community health activist. As a person devoted to health of people and their communities, I'm here to testify about some of the reasons money allocated for the militarization in this country should be redirected to providing for the needs of people and communities. There are many determinants of health that intersect, affecting both personal health and community health. I shall list some determinants that I'm aware of impacting on personal health and the health of New York City. I'm concerned about the political and social determinants. There are many inequities that intersect with each other in all aspects of life. Economic stability and prevention, and the prevention and amelioration of poverty must be addressed by adequate employment, safe housing, availability of healthy foods, accessible and acceptable quality health care, including home care services for the infirm and elderly, mental health, preventive and treatment care, and quality education, including early childhood development. New York City must make provisions for these services. Concerning the community, adequate and affordable transportation, safe neighborhoods, free of crime and violence, opportunities for recreation, community centers encouraging civic inclusion and participation, services for the aged, repair and upkeep of cities' infrastructures, including street sewers, lines, lightings, subways, et cetera, and excellent sanitation are all factors in maintaining healthy community. Racism and discrimination are prevalent in New York City, and both require active protective services. The dismantling of mass incarceration, condition in prisons, and treatment, including health care, of those incarcerated must be addressed. When cities can't find enough money for housing, health care, childcare, quality education, and infrastructure while Congress finds plenty of money for weapon makers and endless wars, the money has got to be moved to address the needs of the people living in the United States. Please pass Resolution 423.
Can I ask a question? Where'd you guys all meet each other? Like, when did this, when did you find the Make, Move the Money? And when, and when, and when did the organization, when did you find Move the Money, the...
2018.
2018, okay. And you just all found, you were all connected prior to that, and then... Okay, okay.
Oh, I said, and many, some of us came out of the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, which addresses the ability of things, amenities that should be given every person to develop their full potential. And we're from many, many different organizations.
And are there roots? Do you have any roots or affiliation groups on college campuses? Like, where is...
Well, U.S. Labor Against the War, which formed the Iraq War, it was a CUNY, well, CUNY and other organizations as well, it attracted a lot of people, of faculty and staff and students, and so that was a seminal group, and that, and that included the students. You know, so people got, but then, after that war kind of phased out, some of us started to realize that the money, the military money, the war was over, but the military kept going more and more and more, and that's the problem. I mean, that's what we're looking to ameliorate.
I'm just, I'm amazed by how organized you all are, even in terms of, you know, you come out a lot and testify a lot, and that's impressive. You know, not a lot of groups can say the same, and I'm wondering if there's, you know, effort of, you know, seeing this expanded, right? Because I think more people need to be advocating for what you're advocating for.
Well, we realize that it's, it's all connected. We realize that the deprivation, the homelessness on the streets, the...
Totally.
You know, we realize that that could be fixed. It's not inevitable.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Phyllis was on the Freedom Rides going down south in 1962.
No, not Freedom Rides. I just went down the summer of 1964.
64. Well, she's been at it for a long time.
Our next panel will be Matthew Weinstein, Jane Tara Curry, Sally Jones, and Anthony Donovan.
Hi, everybody, everybody. I'm Matthew Weinstein. I'm 77. I think what Chairman Ose was questioning was the average age of the people in this room. We are veterans of a peace movement that goes back to the 1960s. I was very active on the Brooklyn College campus in the W.E.B. Du Bois Clubs, a socialist organization back then, and I've been active ever since. I can't believe I'm still having to fight this fight. In fact, it's worse than ever. But today, I want to talk about trash. And besides a peace advocate, I'm also a community activist. I'm active in my block association. I live in Prospect Heights in Brooklyn. I was born, raised, worked, studied, and lived in Brooklyn my whole life. And trash is a health issue for every person that lives in this city. And I care about my neighborhood and my neighbors, and I connect that with my outlook about 423 and the spending priorities, the misguided spending priorities in Congress. So my neighbors call me the sanitation commissioner, because they see me walking around picking up litter in our tree beds, soda cans, candy wrappers that people throw in there, because there are no trash baskets in my neighborhood anymore. They have removed thousands of them from our city. They're now removing them from commercial, busy commercial strips as well. So this is the richest city in the world, as some people have noted. But our filthy streets do not reflect that. And now, with the mayor ordering these draconian cuts, the amounts of trash on our streets will grow exponentially. Parks will be subject to the same cutbacks. And our parks, which working-class and poorer people depend on because they don't have a backyard, will, will be recreating in parks. And I live right a block from Prospect Park. I know how dirty that gets when there are cutbacks. Our city can have good things. Our people can have vital services delivered instead of receiving one round of cutbacks and layoffs. I want to see this City Council, and I want to see Chio Sei leading a march along with Carlina and Speaker Adams, I don't think the mayor will join you, to march around that Capitol Building and tell them to get their act together and spend money to feed the people and stop and put the Pentagon on a starvation diet. That's what I want to see. Please pass 423.
And I definitely hear you on the, you said something about, like, what I was getting at in terms of the specific demographic or whatever in the room. I'm sure, there's a lot of people, a lot of my friends, you know, who, who look different than a lot of us who are in here, who, you know, intergenerational, interracial, you know, who are really protesting a lot right now against the war that we're seeing take place in Gaza. And I'm sure a lot of these folks have, you know, a lot to learn from, from folks who have been doing this for, for wars prior to the ones that we're experiencing now, right? And I think that, I'm just curious, like, how we can amplify your message if people are curious about, you know, what, what, because not every, people who are in the streets today, you know, they're, they're protesting against what's happening, but you guys mobilized to get a resolution to be brought to the City Council, right? And then you're here to testify and it'll be voted on next week, right? That's pretty impressive stuff, right? I don't think a lot of people know.
It's very difficult. We struggle against something that we refer to as the silo effect. Every movement is in a little silo, not connected. I mean, it was heartbreaking today to listen to these people, these artists, these cultural affairs people. It's heartbreaking, but there, there's no realization of what has to be done in order to change things. And that's what was missing. And I hope that putting the city on official record urging substantial cuts to that elephant in the room that sits there that nobody ever wants to mention.
Right.
Military spending, a trillion dollars a year, while our cities go down the tubes. You can see it all around you. You see it in the trash, but you see it everywhere else, in our schools, our subways.
Yeah.
Just look around.
But even deeper than that, I mean, I think 66% of the American population advocates for, wants to see a cut in military spending, right? That's the majority of the population of the United States. The reason both parties are not doing that is because of the defense lobby, right?
Sure.
So I'm wondering what, I would love to hear, and we could definitely talk about this off-hearing, about what the strategy is there. Because it's, as much as we advocate and push these resolutions, our elected officials are sometimes bought out by, you know, people who have millions and billions and make millions and billions from war.
We agree with you.
Got to get the money out of politics.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Chair Ose and other committee members for holding this hearing on Resolution 423. My name is Jane Tara Curry. I'm a native-born New Yorker currently residing in Brooklyn. I serve as the Downstate Co-Chair of Peace Action New York State and an organizer with Move the Money New York City. I will leave it to my colleagues to present testimony with the facts, figures, and details on the many human needs which are underfunded while weapons manufacturers reap enormous profits from Department of Defense contracts. You may be in agreement with those analyses, but still question the importance of passing Resolution 423, a resolution about the Pentagon budget over which the Council has no direct control. My testimony will focus on the answer to that question. Our mayor has announced that he must implement an austerity budget, cutting money from vital and already underfunded social services like schools, libraries, parks, and hospitals. He says he must do this because New York City just doesn't have the money to sustain these services. How is it that the largest and richest city in the largest and richest country in the world doesn't have enough money to run its schools effectively? To a great extent, this is because our national leadership has chosen to allocate about 60% of the federal discretionary budget to the Pentagon, a department which has never been able to pass an audit. Our city leadership needs to say loudly and clearly that this is theft. The city should not quietly do its best with the inadequate funding it has. The mayor and council must assert that there, there is plenty of money around. It's just not being allocated to our cities and localities to provide the social services that the people of every other rich country in the world has. The U.S. Council of Mayors made such a declaration back in 2017. Use your megaphone. The megaphone of the City Council will be heard nationally. Use it to say it's time to rethink what we mean by national security. Move the money from war to our community.
Thank you, thank you.
My name is Sally Jones. I am here to support Resolution 423. I've lived in Staten Island since 1979. I've been involved with Peace Action of Staten Island and Peace Action New York State for the last 21 years. I want to thank each of you on this committee for having this hearing. I didn't think much about Pentagon budget before I got involved in, in Peace Action in 2002. It is staggering to realize that half of our discretionary federal budget is allocated to war. That has added up to over $8 trillion since the beginning of the war in Afghanistan, according to the Watson Institute at Brown University. Then, I learned how difficult it is, as you mentioned, to challenge this spending in Congress. The Pentagon has offices in the U.S. Capitol, giving them easy access to elected officials and their staff. The major weapons manufacturers are lobbying hard in the halls of Congress, too. Congress even authorizes money for projects that the Pentagon says it doesn't want. It is hard for most of us to relate to the enormity of this budget, the military budget. But we do relate to the effect of cutbacks in city services, when the library closes on the weekend, when the parks and streets are dirtier, when seniors and young teens have no place to go, and on and on. The mayor tells us there is no money, and these cutbacks are necessary. That's when I raised my hand. Hey, guys, there actually is a lot of money available, but it's going to fund war around the world. Resolution 423 is a way for all of us in New York City to raise our hand and say, move the money from war to our communities, and I urge this committee to support this Resolution 423. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I was, I was hoping the Carnegie Hall fellow would stay, because, to answer your question, because that's, but really, that whole group that spoke to us about the arts, they're, they're kind of our testimony, for sure. That's why we're here. Dorothy Day used to say, "The world will be saved by beauty." And that's what the arts represent, and by the education. So, and she knew, and she, as most of you know, sat out here in City Hall Park to protest our militarism. I wish Carlina was here, but God bless her for putting this bill, this resolution up. It's for her child and for those who have grandchildren, all the childs that we are here. My name is Anthony Donovan, by the way, I'm sorry. And with Peace Action, but Veterans for Peace and Catholic Worker, Catholic Worker, by the way, St. Joe's feeds the hungry every day, no questions asked. They're, they're, yeah. Every day throughout the entire pandemic, they fed, no ID needed, whatever. So, yeah, I went to the annual summit down in DC for the Nuclear Deterrence Summit, where all arms manufacturers gather. I've never seen a more confident bunch this, this year in my life. These arms manufacturers have never needed to ask for money. They are in the hiring mode. We are right now in a huge nuclear arms race. Our city, Mayor Adams, put out a PSA, a Public Service Announcement, telling New Yorkers how to prepare for the big one. That's our city, so yeah, thank you so much for holding this. We cannot prepare for the big one. There is no preparation for that. So thank you for knowing that. And trillions, and by the way, when we speak about these vast amounts of money, that's the money that we know about. It is mostly undisclosed. Gosh, time went fast. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to this panel. Our next panel will be Linda Novenski, Sam Koprak, Alice Storm Sutter, and Laura Castro.
You may begin whenever.
I'm sorry. Okay. Hello, my name is Linda Novenski. Thank you to the council for having us. I'm reading a statement for Professor Richard D. Wolf, who, an economist, who could not be here. "Two fundamental facts about the social conditions in New York City today and the military conditions in the world today argue in favor of supporting Resolution 423. In New York City, housing affordability, public schools, transportation systems, health care and services for the elderly are all in or near crisis situations. Social conditions are deteriorating and thereby threaten city life today and for the next generation. Huge growing inequality of wealth only makes matters worse. Improving the quality and quantity of public services throughout the city can make a major difference, slowing the deterioration and at best reversing it. Similar conditions afflict other major metropolitan centers, while parallel declines have long undermined smaller cities and rural areas across the U.S. Globally, the U.S. dominance of the world economy since 1945 is now over. A new world economy has emerged in which the U.S. no longer dominates. A second economic bloc has arisen that, that now exceeds the U.S. bloc in terms of its annual total output of goods and services. Since 2020, the GDP of the U.S. and its major allies, the G7, has been less than the GDP of China and the BRICS, Brazil, Russia, India, and South Africa. And the gap between them keeps growing. The U.S. must now learn to live in a multipolar world to negotiate shared power with its global partners, and one way to do that is to reduce its military footprint, to show the world its commitment to share power rather than to try in ever more desperate wars to dominate."
Thank you.
Set? Okay. Okay. Thank you, council, for hearing us out. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sam Koprak. I'm a Brooklyn resident, a former bioscience researcher, and currently a substitute teacher for the New York City DOE. I come to this hearing to express my alarm over the massive budget cuts being enacted by the Adams administration that will wreak havoc on city services. The initial cuts of $550 million for the DOE will significantly strain resources and punish the students who are already dealing with overcrowded classes and decaying school infrastructure, amongst other serious issues. But why do we need to face this at all? Resolution 423 addresses this malfeasance by calling for hearings to address the pathological underfunding of vital needs dictated by the demands of a bloated military budget that in 2024 will approach nearly $1 trillion derived from the discretionary budget, supplementals, and interest costs from previous wars. In 2010, I helped organize a school presentation on the federal discretionary budget with high school seniors at a school I work in frequently. The program was led by Joe Comifort, who was at that time Executive Director of the National Priorities Project, an organization that conducts research on the ramifications of federal budget allocations. No, sorry. We told the students present in the room that each one of them would be called on to stand up when asked to represent about $10 to $12 billion in federal spending for major components of the federal budget that Congress votes on annually. Joe went through the auditorium and addressed the nearly 90 students present. She initially requested that three to five students stand up for such categories as education, housing, transportation, scientific research, et al. Finally, she asked the remaining 50 or so students to stand as representatives of the Pentagon budget. As the students looked around and witnessed this gross disparity, a young woman who was standing in the education group cried out, "This is F'd up," and burst into tears. That day still haunts me. These students quickly learned about the power of the military-industrial complex. We all need to. That isn't why we need to pass Res 423 and pressure our federal representatives to act on behalf of their constituents to fund human needs.
Thank you.
That's not really lit. Oh, now it's lit, okay. I'm Laura Castro, a former New York City high school teacher and a UFT member, here in support of 423. It breaks my heart that our country squanders so much of its treasure on a wasteful, bloated military when there is so much need crying out to us here in our city. On any given night, 67,000 New Yorkers are in homeless shelters, 21,000 of them children. And this doesn't even count all the children, like many of my former students, who are living doubled up, two families to an apartment, because so many lose their homes and must crowd in with relatives where children may sleep in a living room with no place to do homework. The trauma and dislocation results in learning deficits that aren't made up because every year of learning is precious. Some New York City students do their laundry at school because they have no other way to have clean clothes. And how many students did I have over the years whose aunts, mothers, grandmothers were dying relatively young, younger than a lot of people in this room, younger than they should have, after a lifetime of poor medical care? Because we're the only country in the developed world that doesn't have a universal healthcare system for all. And meanwhile, we persist in throwing buckets of money at a military that has never once passed an audit and can't even keep track of its own things, something no school or city government could do with impunity. And they squander money on things like the F-35 fighter
And they squander money on things like the F-35 fighter jet that don't even work right. That was $1.7 trillion for the life of that contract. This is no way to run a country. Let's pass the resolution and move the money. I agree on Alice Durham Sutter. Thank you for the hearing. I'm a retired family nurse practitioner, public health nurse. During COVID, I volunteered with the New York City Medical Reserve Corps, and I volunteer now with SHAP, the New York Street Homeless Advocacy Program. And I urge the city council to pass 423 Move the Money. Direly needed. According to the Coalition for the Homeless, New York City's homelessness is at a highest level since the 1930s Depression. In September 2023, there were 87,907 homeless people, including 31,510 homeless children sleeping each night in the New York City's main municipal shelter system. Families entering the shelter comes from the poorest neighborhoods in New York City, mostly due to lack of affordable housing. Causes include eviction, severely overcrowding housing, domestic violence, job loss, and hazardous housing conditions. Each night, thousands of unsheltered homeless people sleep in the New York City streets, in the subway system, and other public areas. There's no accurate measurement. The numbers are underestimated. Many have mental illnesses and other health problems, and I've come to know many sick and disabled and aging homeless people and were unable to find adequate living spaces. We meet many asylum seekers. They're unable to find warm clothes, and they may soon lose their temporary spaces. And everyone's suffering with poor nutrition and hunger. So now we're facing drastic budget cuts proposed by the mayor that will bring in even more pain to the New Yorkers who can barely afford basics. Thousands of housing service agency positions are being eliminated. The library hours, the compost programs, education, childcare, city college assistance programs. City workers are losing their jobs. Cuts are planned for food pantries, domestic violence shelters, after-school programs, and the legal services for the neediest people. Our cities... Oh, that's it? I didn't even get to the military, but other people did.
Thank you.
You got the message. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel will be Dorothy M. Zellner, Sylvia Rodriguez Case, Anne Fawcett Ambia, Constancia Romili, and Georgia Weaver.
Begin whenever.
My name is Dorothy Zellner, and I wasn't going to mention it, but I was a staff member of the Student Nonviolence Coordinating Committee from 1962 to 1967, and went to Mississippi scared to death the entire time. I just want to talk about housing. I live in ZIP Code 10025, Upper West Side. You may think we're all rich up there. We're not. This includes many working and middle-class families. How affordable housing is the problem. Here are the numbers. An average cost of a studio apartment in this area is over $3,000 a month, and an apartment big enough for a small-sized family, two bedrooms, is over $5,000 a month. How is it possible that an average working family can afford this kind of rent when the median income is $120,000? That means everybody in the family who works, meaning that half of the families in my neighborhood earn less than that figure. And as for new housing, from 2010 to 2020, only 15% of new housing units in the Upper West Side were for low-income New Yorkers. Guess how many new moderate and middle-class income units in this period were brought into the housing market? None. None. I refuse to accept the proposition that New York City exists for millionaires only, and neither do a majority of my fellow New Yorkers. One of the prime reasons for this problem is that the US spends much of our federal budget on the military, which my colleagues have already gone to in chapter and verse. Please tell the rest of the city council and the people who unfortunately have left that we should move money from the weapons of death to what we really need, among them affordable housing, for the vast numbers of people in the city we love.
Thank you.
I'm Georgia Weaver. I came to this organization through the union movement that did a lot of organizing. I appreciate Chairman Osay and other people on the committee for calling these hearings very much. Now, I see a lot of shows where people are sitting around talking about human needs, and it's sad and it's tragic sometimes. I hear the inevitable chant that funds are not available. "No, we're not broke. No." How can I say such a thing? Because a huge pot of money is available to us in the military budget. That's the elephant in the room that nobody wants to talk about and apparently nobody wants to hear. And yet, 66%, as Chairman Osay told us, of the people of the United States are willing to see the military budget cut in place of human needs. That budget is $1.5 trillion, according to the National Priorities Project. What's left over is fought for by all these agencies who are trying to fulfill their mandates. And we hear them, and our hearts go out to them. Education and social services only got $298 billion. I didn't say trillion. The federal budgets are plundering even further by lobbyists and arms dealers and arms manufacturers. I think that New York City needs to lead the charge of all the people in the United States against this priority of war.
Good afternoon. My name is Anne Fawcett Ambia. I'm in Brooklyn for Peace and Fight Back Bay Ridge. I'm a retired public interest attorney who worked as a staff attorney at DC 37, representing New York City municipal workers in housing proceedings of all kinds. Congress doesn't listen to us. As a body, they tend to make decisions based on what's profitable for big business, and wars are profitable. Unfortunately, war profits have led the US to become the country with the largest percentage of its federal discretionary budget spent on the military and wars of any nation on earth. What that priority in spending leaves for social services programs has put the US far down the list internationally in every area, from providing affordable healthcare, education, and housing to community services. A few examples of what these spending priorities have recently meant for me personally, now single and living alone on one fixed income, are having to fight with other city retirees to keep my employer-promised retiree federal Medicare from city plotting to save money by trying to privatize my healthcare into an inferior for-profit Medicare Advantage plan; having to fight to restore weekend service for the X-28 Express bus that runs right near my home so that I can get into the city without having to walk seven blocks back home from the nearest subway at night; getting through 2020 with a park nearest me filled with garbage and broken benches, both inside and along the perimeter; and with the children's playground equipment broken and covered in yellow caution tape. Now with budget cuts pending from the end of COVID stimulus funds and ever-increasing war spending, these same things and more are on the line all over again, so much for the golden years. However, I'm aware that I'm in better shape than many of my former municipal worker clients whose lower pay leaves them with unsustainable retirement incomes that mean having to choose between essentials like buying food and medicine or paying rent. For many of them, the pending budget cuts mean no internet access when libraries are closed, a harder time getting access a ride to get out anywhere, fewer senior citizen programs, and hunting for food pantries, and what's left in donations to the now-defunded mutual aid organizations that sprang up during the pandemic.
Thank you. Thank you.
Pass. Pass Resolution 423.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Rodriguez Case, and I'm with Move the Money New York City and Peace Action New York State. I live on West 106th Street, and it's District 7, which is Sean Abreu's district. I want to thank this committee for holding the hearing. Thank you, Chair Osay. And I support the Resolution 423. We must move money from war to our communities. I attended the Care Not Cuts rally on Monday, and many council members spoke up very strongly about the severe cuts to the budget that Mayor Adams is proposing, the horrendous cuts to human needs in New York City. Passing this resolution will say to President Biden and the US government that New York City, the largest city in the US, more than twice the population of the next-largest LA, is calling for money to be moved from war to the human needs of our citizens. The US military is grounding all Osprey helicopters after one of these aircraft crashed the end of November, killing all eight airmen. So far, 60 people, airmen, have been killed in Osprey accidents to date at a cost of about $84 million per helicopter, and the procurement costs are about $56 billion. It appears that the Osprey is a failure, but the US government continues to throw money at it, at this project. How can the US government spend almost 60%, $858 billion or so, of our discretionary spending on the defense budget and ignore the human needs of its citizens? The Department of Defense, the Pentagon, has not passed any of the audits in the last six years. The US Department of Defense has, I'm sorry, $3.8 trillion in assets, and the auditors found that half of their assets could not be accounted for, almost $2 trillion. Thank you, and please pass Resolution 423.
Thank you.
Our next panel will be Frances Geddis, Stephen Kramer, Monroe Allison, and Brendan K., and Robert Kilbuck. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Thank you. Oh, Fay. I said K. Oh, okay.
You may begin whenever.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Osay. Thank you so much for calling us and letting us have our voice to speak in support of Resolution 423. My name is Brendan Fay. I'm here as a member of NICAN, the New York City Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons, and also Pax Christi, a Catholic peace group. In recent days, I've been appalled at the mayor's budget cuts, just like everybody else has said, to essential human needs in our city, from libraries, schools, city parks, healthcare, housing, and hunger. My husband, Tom Moulton, who's a pediatric hematologist oncologist, was just on New York One the other day talking about the impact of these cuts and others on children with sickle cell in our city. I'm just shocked when I tell people this one New York can't do. And yet, by the millions, the military spending continues to grow. There is no cutbacks there. And from research, we've even learned that millions, indeed over a billion, of hard-earned New York City pension funds of New York City workers, teachers, firefighters, aldermen are currently being invested in nuclear weapons production. It's outrageous. Yes, key to the services of the city are the federal grants, the funding. We need a new economic imagination that prioritizes human needs and human rights. It's not a time for scapegoating migrants and immigrants who in fact bring skills and gifts to our city and strengthen the economy and raise the children and mind clean the houses and the offices by day. I just came from participating in a week-long meeting at the United Nations on nuclear nonproliferation. I told stories of the New Yorkers Dorothy Day and Bayard Rustin, who organized the March in Washington 60 years ago in 1963, freedom and jobs. If he was here, he would be here in support of this resolution. And Dorothy Day, founder of the Catholic Worker Movement. Let a message go from this New York City, from the city council, that we need to disarm our economy and build an economy for peacemaking, for health, and transport. Support Resolution 423. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I'm a Vietnam-era veteran, a member of Veterans for Peace, New York City Chapter, also a graduate of CCNY. I use the VA healthcare system, which provides us with excellent care. The VA is currently being privatized. Hospitals are being closed. Our care is being outsourced. Another betrayal of the promises made when we volunteered to serve our nation. The US wastes over $900 billion per year on militarism, more than the next 10 nations combined, including China, Russia, and Iran. Every dollar spent on war-making is money that could instead be spent on healthcare, education, housing, sustainability. It is unconscionable we cannot find more resources. We can't find more resources every year for the Department of Defense, the only federal agency that can't even pass an audit while we cannot find the money to pay for hungry children to eat lunch. Is this really what we want to be funding? The great Forceps Star General, hero of World War II, Republican President Eisenhower famously stated, "Every gun that is made, every warship launched, every rocket signifies, in the final sense, a theft from those who hunger and are not fed, those who are cold and are not clothed." Federal budget is the clearest expression of the values and priorities of the United States. Over $900 billion wasted on war-making and destruction while urgent human needs are being neglected is an insult to human dignity. Pass Resolution 423. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Frances Katellis, and I'm a clinical psychologist. And I'm also part of the Jails Action Coalition and the Halt Solitary Campaign here in New York. And the issue I want to address is the number of mentally ill people who are in our jails and prisons and should not be there. Mental health should not be criminalized as if, you know, they did it deliberately. You know, we know that that's not true. The question is, how did that happen? Well, in the '50s and the early '60s, there were lots of mental hospitals in this state, psychiatric facilities that were dreadful. They were real hellholes. And ultimately, there was a movement to deinstitutionalize people. There were two parts to that agreement. Is one, you deinstitutionalize, but the other part was you set up community-based care centers that would help the people to function better. that would help the people to function better and to build decent lives for themselves. Unfortunately, what happened, which seems to be too typical of governments, is they closed the facilities, put everybody out, but never put in place the community care facilities that were needed. We're not funding them very, particularly here in the city. There's such a drastic underavailability of services of any kind, especially for people with serious mental illness problems. And the federal government, at one point, gave some money for nursing homes that included access for people with mental health problems. But then, a few years later, they decided, oh, no. We'll keep the nursing homes, but we won't accept the mentally ill anymore. So in other words, they stopped funding this drastic need that we have. And so I agree that instead of them spending their money on bombs and war, they should be helping, I mean, New York has a responsibility for providing decent care for people, and so does the federal government. So I want you to pass the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Monroe Allison. I'm from Brooklyn for Peace, and I want to thank you for having us be able to speak. And what I'm going to be talking about is the carbon footprint of the military. And that, what I'm going to be saying is coming from someone who gave a speech last week at COP28. Her name is Deborah Burton. And she has an expert on just what the carbon emissions were, and the military itself doesn't say what it is. So she had to do immense amount of research to dig this information out. And she was speaking on behalf of some African nations. And what these African nations were doing, Africa has almost no electricity generated by windmills or by solar power because those require a lot of upfront money. It's not, and the countries are too poor to get it. So what the countries had was this idea is that NATO is, the United States is pressuring NATO members to have 2% of their budgets, not of the budgets, but the gross national product, go towards military procurement. And what she was trying to do is, rather than spend this money getting extra armaments, and she went through the destruction of what would happen if those extra armaments were made, is why not have it so that that money can be used for funds, which can be then lent to these countries so that they can put in windmills, the battery storage units, and the solar power? And what she was saying is the information that is what she's giving is specifically related to NATO, and I'll be citing that information. Okay, but it's a lot larger than the US. But the whole, all of Africa only uses, the carbon footprint is only 3.5% of the world's consumption. NATO's is 5.5. So NATO, just what NATO was spending, this was before the war in Ukraine, was more than 50% more than all of Africa's doing now.
Wow. Thank you.
Okay, our last in-person panel will be Kelly Smith, Laura Leibin, Elizar Alhannon, Robert Greenberg, and Neil Berry.
Hello to the committee and to the chairman. Thank you very much for hearing us. My name is Dr. Elizar Alhannon, and I mean, I'm very touched by the discussion here today. As a CUNY professor, I see every day what is the benefit of public spending. As a former veteran, I feel and see on my body what is the outcome of military spending. And yeah, what's the difference between the two? I came here to speak today as an Israeli veteran on the request of Veterans for Peace. I am a founding member of Combatants for Peace and a member of, a board member of American Friends of Combatants for Peace, an organization bringing together combatants from both sides, struggling together nonviolently against the occupation. As such, I was a recipient of at least a substantial portion of these military funding, military allocations. And counter to the habitual discourse, I'm here to say, I came here to say, that this does not provide us or anyone in any way with security. This is often the argument, and it's a lie. It provides profit for the weapon manufacturers, and it provides death to us and to the Palestinians that we live with. We founded Combatants for Peace. I myself, I lost my sister Smadar in a suicide bombing in 1997, and following that, joined together with other bereaved Israeli families and bereaved Palestinian families to look for another way. That way is the way of solidarity, the way of coexistence, the way of struggling together for an end of the occupation. You cannot do that through arming. You can do it only through joint activities. I will finish with that. Our motto is, when you look for peace, through the sights of a gun, you cannot see the horizon. You definitely cannot see the bigger picture. You need to look at reality differently, and this is what I came here to say on behalf of Veterans for Peace. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Laura Leibin, and I'm a music teacher in New York City, well, recently retired, working with very young kids. What made me want to testify is recently I was talking to a relative, and she just graduated getting her degree in engineering. And she got her first job working for a very large company that makes arms. And I'm not going to say what it is because I don't want to get her into trouble. But she said that she's only been there since September, but she notices that they seem to have more money than they know what to do with. And she said that it's not well-run, and she was surprised that it took a long time for her to get information she needs for her projects. And she was very disillusioned in that sense. The very next day, I heard that 3K is starting to get cutbacks. It's a city program that's for three-year-olds to be in school together, and it's for all kids, which is unusual as a music teacher. Mostly, I've taught in private schools with very, you know, rich kids versus public schools where they were more economically disadvantaged. And 3K is really open for everyone, and in our neighborhoods, which are being gentrified. I think it's a wonderful thing that kids from different backgrounds can work together. So on the one hand, you know, more money than they know what to do with. On the other hand, 3K is getting cutbacks. That is why I support Resolution 423, and I hope you will vote for it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kelly Smith. I didn't get the white t-shirt memo, so I wore my black t-shirt. I live in the East Village. I'm very sorry. The lady to the left, she's been very supportive of helping the rebuilding of my church, the Middle Collegiate Church, a vibrant social justice interracial congregation in the East Village. I'm a tri-chair with the New York State Poor People's Campaign. We organize all over the state, thank you, and nationally. And we have thousands of people here in New York City, which is where I do most of my organizing. You've heard Dr. King's quote. It's already been shared. You know, he identified the war economy as one of the three greatest evils facing our country. The three greatest evils. It was poverty, it was racism, and it was the war economy. I can only imagine what Dr. King, well, I think I know what Dr. King would think today. We, you know, as my colleague said here, the defense is supposed to make us feel safer. It's supposed to make the world safer. Are we safer? Poverty is the fourth-leading cause of death in this nation. Are we safer? 250,000 people die every year from poverty. Are we safer? New York is the most unequal state in the nation. It's like embarrassing. You know, I moved here 30 years ago, and I was so struck by the vibrancy and the energy and the boldness. I joined the Poor People's Campaign because it was a bold vision. We are working to bring organizations together. You asked earlier, like, are we connected? That's what the Poor People's Campaign does. We bring people together. Let's be bold. I mean, is it actually really bold to ask for this reduction? But let's be bold. Let's make New York City a leader. This shouldn't be this hard. This shouldn't be this hard.
Thank you.
Please, we are asking you, let's be the leader that New York City can be because others will follow.
Thank you.
Also, it's ridiculous that it's called the Defense Budget in the US. It's an Offense Budget.
Totally. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our in-person testimony. And we will now be moving to remote testimony. Our first remote panel will be Neil Berry, Donju Min, Hannah Mackler, and Potry Kianonur. Neil, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Starting time.
My name is Neil Berry. I'm from Brooklyn, New York. I'd just like to thank you guys for having the hearing today. And I think we need to justify, 423 needs to be passed. And I'm basically going to complain about, or be concerned about Staten Island and its inability to have cultural, you know, equity and parity. We've already discussed that. But I'd also like to talk about the fact that they brought in the new shelter, that housing home close to 200 adults and about 600 children without the input of the community, and this place is under-resourced as it is. It's not fair to, that community itself is mostly black and brown. And they're being underutilized and under-resourced in the schools. They don't have seats in the school as it is. And so this military budget is like ridiculous. Like the people who precede me talked about, there's, you know, there's problems here aboard, and what are we doing? These kids didn't ask to come here to be poor, so stop blaming it on asylum seekers. You know, it's mismanagement of money. So yeah, my testimony is basically mismanagement. We don't want to talk, we don't want to duplicate the same problem with the asylum seekers. They're the same people, too, that came here 200, 300 years ago. They didn't ask to have the problems in their country. They need to a better place, as many of us have. So this may complete my testimony. But I'm really concerned about that shelter in Staten Island and those kids that, like I said, did not ask for this kind of treatment. We're better than this as a nation, and we do have the resources and 1% that's controlling us. It's not fair. It's not just. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Donju. You may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Starting time.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to offer this testimony on behalf of the New York Historical Society. My name is Donju Min, and I serve as New York Historical's Manager of Institutional Giving Operations. Today, I'd like to tell you about our efforts to expand our reach to all corners of the city with particular focus on communities typically underserved by cultural institutions, and also to emphasize the impact of the DCLA funding we receive. The first step of our outreach is ensuring that our programming reflects the rich cultural fabric of our city. New York Historical aims to supplement content in cultural institutions and history textbooks by retelling critical chapters in our history through the perspectives of those often left out of the American narrative. To give you an example of this work, I'd like to highlight one of our exhibitions currently on view, K. Walking Stick in the Hudson River School, which puts the contemporary Cherokee artist K. Walking Stick's landscapes in conversation with a collection of Hudson River School paintings. So the next step, then, is to promote our work to the broadest possible audience. And at the forefront of this commitment is our education initiatives. In recent years, New York Historical has served K through 12 schools in 50 city council districts with a particular focus on Title I schools. Our education staff work to conduct thorough and deep outreach to all schools in all districts, and also to let them know that discounts and waivers are offered on a need basis for programs that aren't already offered for free. In FY '23, 535 of the 672 schools we served were located outside of Manhattan. We extend this commitment to outreach to all of our programs, starting from our early childhood education offerings and up to higher education opportunities and programs for the general public. For example, our citizenship project, which provides lawful permanent residents seeking citizenship with free civics classes to prepare them for the US naturalization test. In the last fiscal year, 84% of participants in this project lived in the outer boroughs. So thank you once more for the opportunity to offer this testimony. We realize that our work would not be possible without the support of the city council and the Department of Cultural Affairs, and we thank you and your fellow city council members for your exceptional service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Mackler, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Starting time.
Hi, thank you to the committee for the opportunity to testify about cultural outreach. I'm Hannah Mackler, Director of Government and UJ Relations at the 92nd Street Y, New York, 92NY. We're a community and cultural center based on the Upper East Side, but we reach patrons, schools, and communities in all five boroughs. For example, our school engagement in the Arts Department connects about 6,500 students annually with artists of the highest caliber through school-based instruction and live events at 92NY. 23 schools from 15 council districts are already enrolled in this year's Discovery Series, which offers 18 sessions of curriculum-based dance and music education to elementary school students. We were disappointed about the peg cuts to especially affecting CDF funding and asked there be no further cuts. This funding is vital to programs like the Discovery Series. We also asked there be no cuts to cost of funding, which last year enabled 92NY to provide impactful cultural programs at nine schools in Manhattan, Brooklyn, and the Bronx. Another program to mention, Teen Producers, offers a two-year paid internship in the arts to 92NY, at 92NY, to high school juniors and seniors. And these and other ways we're reaching students where they are and enabling them to experience art at a cultural organization outside their neighborhood. In a similar vein, in March 2024, we're thrilled to be reviving Teen Arts Week, a citywide celebration of the arts for teens by teens. Leading cultural organizations across all five boroughs will present free admission classes, workshops, performances for teens. In 2019 and 2020, 80% of teen registrants were first-time visitors to an institution. So we're helping teens take advantage of the vast cultural resources of the city in their own neighborhoods and in other boroughs, enabling them to expand their own cultural understanding and artistic skills and explore their interests. So thank you for your support, and we urge you to continue supporting NYC cultural organizations.
Thank you. Potry, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
You may begin. You may begin.
Hello. Hello, salam aleikum, rabbat ha'varakato. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. My name is Potry Rankamanis, Kianonur. I'm Artistic Director and Founder of the Kindingsin Down Heritage Foundation. Otherwise, I'm also a registered nurse who came here to America recruited to become part of the solution for the pandemic before 1990s, the AIDS, and AIDS. And also served the frontline of COVID-19. I'm a cultural worker. I brought with me the indigenous living tradition of Southern Philippines, and that is what Kindingsin Down mission is, to put that into the map of USA, the visibility... Kindings in Down mission is, to put that into the map of USA, the visibility of the indigenous people of Southern Philippines, and also the indigenous people that are here in the diaspora in America, particularly in the Queens area. Kindings in Down has served New York for thirty-one years, and we have been low-budget. We're a very small organization. We have been helped by organizations like Asian American Arts Alliance and CACF. And up to now, the, my crisis right now is I'm not able to pay my staff since October. I'm putting out my own overtime money to pay the staff, just to continue our mission. Our mission is very critical for the American history, Asian-American Pacific Islander history, our stories that we put up. We have produced fourteen main shows that La Mama has given us space as a resident, and they are all historical events, but is not present in American history when USA was, took over the Spaniards and were sold to USA for twenty million dollars in December ten, eighteen ninety-eight. After that, the mission school was placed in our area, and everything that was used among the natives here in USA was applied to us.
Your time has expired.
The massacre. Thank you. And what I'm asking is, please consider not to cut the fifteen percent, particularly for the arts and culture, because this is the one that carries the spirit of New York, our industry, our mental health, and our anti-Asian hate crime programs that is carried by our culture, arts, and living tradition.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next remote panel will be Melody Kapote and Lauren Miller. Melody, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
You may begin.
I just got called. I just got called. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Can you put it on screen so we can hear each other?
No, oh, God. Okay, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the city council, my name is Melody Kapote, Executive Director of the Caribbean Cultural Center African Diaspora Institute. Earlier presenters today have spoken as if everything is hunky-dory. Some have said that we are resilient, and we will find our way back to all of these cuts with DCLA, the CDF programs. I'm here to tell you that it's bad, real bad. Those of us that receive funding from CDF grants through DCLA have yet to receive our award letters for fiscal twenty-three, and most of us are halfway into our fiscal year. We have started our programming this year in July, and now are freezing and eliminating programs and staff because everything is uncertain, not only for the next fiscal year, but for what we are experiencing right now, today, in this fiscal year. I appear today to comment on the oversight topic of arts and cultural organizations' outreach into New York City communities. I congratulate you for what appears to be a long overdue insight, namely, if you want to make a difference in communities that were intractable with, where intractable poverty, turmoil, hate incidents, and institutionalized racism prevail, one cannot expect that community to reach out to the purveyors of arts and culture, because it is the duty of the arts and culture community to reach out to them. Yet, only fifteen percent of the DCLA budget goes to smaller organizations, organizations who both exist in the community and do not have to, do not have to do the outreach, in the classic. I am so sorry. I am like rushing. Do not have to do the outreach in the classic sense because they are integral and integral part of the community. And while there is insufficient transparency
Your time has expired.
within the fifteen percent, it is fair to say that only a small percentage of that represents organizations of color within communities of color. And now, we are told to get ready for peg cuts that can result in reductions as high as twenty percent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Miller, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
You may begin.
Thank you, council members and Chair Ose. My name is Lauren Miller, and I am the Advancement and Alliance Director of the Bushwick Star in Council District Thirty-seven. We are the only professional nonprofit producing theater in Bushwick. We serve five thousand-plus audiences and a hundred and twenty learners from the age of nine to ninety-nine every year. The Star lost our original space in Council District Thirty-four in twenty-twenty and have been fighting to construct our permanent home in Bushwick without interrupting our artistic and educational programs ever since. We remain grateful for the city's significant capital and programs investments in our theater over the years, but its current cuts and delays put our already precarious circumstance at immediate extreme risk. We are not alone in the struggle. Bushwick is an internationally renowned, vibrant cultural community, but just us and a handful of community arts centers struggle to survive as nonprofit institutions amid a proliferation of for-profit galleries and venues which charge a premium for exclusive access. Rather than intentional planning and investment, the city has ceded our cultural development to the whims of the market, and so there is no Spanish-language theater venue, for instance, or an Afro-Latino museum, or other professional culturally-specific institutions in this gentrifying, primarily black, brown, and immigrant community. We can and must change that through robust capital and programs funding and timely awards and payments. It's clear at less than a quarter of a percent of the city's budget that the CDF is clearly underfunded, but the years of underinvestment have also led to a cratering of capacity within the agency itself, which leads to inefficiencies and delays that compound our struggles. We're currently a hundred and sixty-five days into FY twenty-four. We have received not, no notification, let alone funding from CDF or the council initiatives that we applied to seven to ten months ago, not to mention the labyrinthine process for accessing capital funds. We know that the agency wants to give the best possible service to our communities, but they need your help. Navigating these constant cuts is making their already difficult undertaking impossible. I want to thank my fellow brave New Yorkers today for highlighting the hypocrisy of a government that fuels endless war amidst a
Your time has expired.
care. Thank you. Please resist the pay cuts and fund our communities, including the arts.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our last remote panel will be Gregory Calvin, Marisol Duran, and Hikma Abdulgani. Gregory, you can begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
You may begin.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, technical difficulties. My name is Gregory Calvin. My pronouns are he/him. I live in Ridgewood, Queens. I'm a member of Brooklyn for Peace, Queens, also Lenape, and Canarsie Land. I'm here simply to state relatively quickly, you know, to thank Chairman Ose and all council members, and that, you know, if passed on and voted, Resolution four-two-three, the council simply would be stating that the military budget takes away federal funding that New York City needs. And to take one example, when funding a military bases overseas competes with programs struggling to survive here, to me, that is a recognition something's not right. I thank the committee for taking time to consider this resolution. I hope it'll be passed and voted on next week. And one final thing is in regard to some of the discussion earlier regarding other groups of citizens and other demographics, I can speak to at least some of the views that many young people share. I'm thirty, and I noticed that many young people in my generation involved in activism are directive, motivated, and passionate concerning the issue of war and peace and economic justice. However, I think what we don't always see at rallies or on social media is that young folks are also really desperate actually to see signs of guidance from, and their views reflected by elected officials. So I can't tell you how many groups I'm in where young folks are looking for any past voting record, any quote from elected representatives, to see that their views are reflected in regards to peace and equitable distribution of funding. And I think, you know, the council passing this resolution would serve just that purpose. It would serve as a form of a moral guide for folks that we, the peace movement and community organizing can point to, and we can say, look, our elected representatives do understand the gravity of disproportionate funding at the federal level. And then we could also say, yes, you know, while New York City council members are not responsible for the federal budget, they do recognize that fiscally biased decisions
Your time has expired.
at the federal level directly affect us. So if it would be passed, it would be greatly appreciated by me and people in my generation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marisol, you can begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
You may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Marisol Duran. I was born and raised in the Bronx, District Fifteen. I am a mom of a six-month-old, and we live in District Seventeen. I speak this afternoon to help improve condition for my child and other children in the Bronx. I support Resolution four-twenty-three because District Fifteen and Seventeen are some of the most struggling communities when it comes to education and public safety. It is important that children in less-resourced districts have the tools and support to excel academically. Our public libraries should not lose funding because they are essential community institutions where children of all ages can learn in addition to school. As a young adult, I spent many hours at the public library studying for standardized exam. Our apartment was too small to have my own designated study area, so the library was the only place where I could get most of my studying done for my undergraduate and postgraduate studies. Now, I take my baby to the baby classes at the New York Public Library in Palom Bay. These classes have been helpful because he has accomplished many milestones for his young age. Growing up, I witnessed few children have access to educational opportunities outside of school. I participated in many of these activities available only to a small group of children because of the lack of funding. As a result, only a small fraction of my peers from elementary school went beyond high school. Some of my closest friends could not read or write at the designated level. Therefore, many did not even graduate high school. I am disappointed to not see my representative co-sign the resolution because investing in our children is the way to promote real public safety. I urge this committee to pass the bill so that every child in the city has access to opportunities for academic excellence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hikma, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for holding the hearing, and I hope that it will pass. I'm Hikma Abdulgani, a resident of the Hopeful Women's Alliance, a parent, and I am a state chair of my first middle school. This resolution has the support of peace activist and everyday leaders who come together on a Friday Saturday. The president knows that every dollar spent on the military, and her dollar taken away from other vital services. In light of that, I believe the public has a right to know about power and ideally to access military budget towards community needs and what we know contributes to women's welfare. Our mayor is demanding budget cuts at a time when we should be investing in communities, health, safety, education, climate, and our quality of life. We see that there are many needs, and that this resolution is an opportunity to shed light on military spending and what our citizens are going to do to national priorities that are out of alignment with the everyday reality of working with people and families like mine. My children's after-school club is being cut. Our middle school will not be playing soccer with us this year. Our local libraries are set to be closed on Sunday, and where there is after-school, the workers are either paid and overworked. When I talk to young people, they're struggling with rent, food, and even the cost of somebody ride to work. As a parent, I'm trying to teach my children to be stewardess of the earth, but community town posting is being cut. In the day of the park, they're surrounded by garbage, and they can't pick apart their park. I look forward to my sons pursuing higher education, but all around us, the city is being cut. These are policy cases made from on high, and we want and deserve accountability. New York City does need answers from Mayor Adams and the city council, but also from our president and Congress, which continues to understand military spending, even as it approaches a trillion dollars. Others have mentioned that the Pentagon has failed an audit for the six straight years, and the Pentagon admits to having no idea where half of their assets are. New York City taxpayers paid one point six billion to Rocky Martin this year. There are entire fields in the desert of old
Your time has expired.
military equipment because of the culture of waste and poverty. Our politicians need to answer for the social spending that is cut to the bone, the dilapidated subway, electric cars, and people who are spending the holidays only in cold
Your time has expired.
price driving. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes our remote testimony, and I'll just do one last call for those who registered but didn't testify. So in person, we have Hillary Exter, Sharon Leslie Brown, Jonathan Forgash, and Robert Greenberg. And then for remote testimony, we have Michelle Barnes Anderson, Luke G. Boyd, Sunny Kumar Ukani, Keith Nelson, Ella Ryan, Mamun Rashid, Fay Moore, Candace Anderson, Philip Schneidman, Nicole Tuzian, and Leonard Jacobs. Seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to seventy-two hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov, and I'll turn it back to the chair for closing statements.
Without further, thank you to everybody who came out and testified. Really, I think this is getting passed next week, I believe. So thank you so much for coming out. And without further ado, this hearing's adjourned.
Yeah, that's why we put it today. Yeah, it has to be, right? We did it. You did it. Of course, it falls when you're sick.
Yeah, I know. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for testifying. We got it all here.